Madam Clerk, are you ready?
As soon as you call the meeting to order.
All right. Good evening. It is Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, and I'd like to call to order the Town Council regular meeting. It is 6:33 PM.
All councilors are present, Madam Clerk. That's, I mean, Madam Clerk, ah ha. Madam Chairman, Chairman and Madam. So here we go. So you've got, you have Councilors Aubrey, Baumgartner, Yead, Zepiri, Bordelon, Franco, Melendez, Parker, and Gravitaske.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And we are on to item number two, salute to the flag. Councilors of Perry, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, sir?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Recognitions, awards, and memorials. And tonight, we have the proclamation celebrating Black History Month for February 2021. And Councilor Bordelon, if you would not mind, please, reading it officially into the record this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God, I just had it here. Hold on. Apologize. Sorry about that. I mixed up my papers when I was moving. One moment, let me just look. One second. All right. Sorry about that. So proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans in our community, cultural, culture, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1915 of the Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the 2021 national theme for the observance is the black family, representation, identity, and diversity, and emphasizes the movement of people of African American descent to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build the society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the town of Groton continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are rep, are, sorry, my eyes, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the town of Groton is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout the state, the nation. Now there be it resolved in recognition of African American history, African Americans in our community, past and present, the Groton Town Council does hereby proclaim February 2021 to Black History Month and encourages all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this first day of February 2021. I still move? Tried to say that.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much for reading that into the record. All right, we are on to item Roman number four, public hearings. We have 2019, 457 11, excess property redevelopment, 517, 529 Gold Star Highway, public hearing. And this was on page four. And Madam Clerk, are you going to read the call?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town of Groton Notice of Public Hearing, March 2nd, 2021. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-163E, a public hearing will be held by the Groton Town Council on March 2nd, 2021, at 6:30 PM for the consideration of the sale of public property, specifically 529 and 517 Gold Star Highway, during a virtual meeting publicly available live on GMTV and YouTube television, dated at Groton, Connecticut, this fourth day of February 2021. That's in Casper Town Clerk. This was posted on our website for, since February 4th. So that, that meets the standard of our requirements for posting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Reiner, at this point, would you like to introduce this or speak to this item at all, sir?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. In addition to the advertisement that the Town Clerk had posted, there was also an onsite sign which is posted on the property, and that was visible. We had actually held a public hearing for the sale back in January, but due to us not putting a public sign up out of an abundance of caution, we thought we'd have another public hearing tonight. There are some exemptions due to COVID of what the advertising requirements are, but we didn't specifically find one that addressed the signage. So again, out of an abundance of caution, this is the second public hearing for this disposition of this property at Gold Star Highway. Just touching upon a couple of quick things. The property is approximately 11.75 acres in size. It was reviewed by our planning commission back in April 12th of 2016 under the 824 referral. And it was found that the sale of the land was consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And after the council has a public hearing, the property is then referred to the RTM for kind of final approval of the disposition. We are working with a preferred developer for this property. We've been working with them for some time. And I think that's about all I have to report on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have no citizens registered to speak at the public hearing unless something has changed in the last minutes. Mr. Burton?
No, I have no one else.
Thank you. All right, so I forgot to note what time we opened the public hearing. I will say, Madam Clerk, did you catch the time? I probably spout 6:39?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So given we have no people signed up to speak at the public hearing, we will close the public hearing at 6:40 PM. Thank you. We are on to receipt of citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors were only asked questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during responses to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. And this evening, I believe we have eight people signed up to speak. So we'll begin with Roseanne Katuski. And Ms. Katuski, I think you're here. There you are. You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Roseanne Katuski, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District 5. Once again, I am here to discuss the concerns regarding the proposal for the Mystic Oral School property. I have been before this body many times since 2016 to discuss the lack of transparency and secrecy regarding this project, as well as the inappropriateness of mega-development that is proposed and unfortunately supported by the town for this property. From what was stated at the recent planning and zoning workshop, the request for a proposal should not have been sent out until the zoning regulations were written, and that the regulations should be written for any developer. Why then are the developers' plans, suggestions, comments, and questions included in the consultant's proposal and the agenda packets for at least two planning and zoning meetings? Why are the taxpayers paying for the consultant to work for the developer? At a recent planning and zoning meeting, an RTM representative very diplomatically and delicately raised the concern of the appearance of an inappropriate relationship between the developer and town staff. I would like to echo that concern, and I hope that the Town Council will take this concern very seriously. Even the appearance of an inappropriate relationship leads to complete lack of trust by the residents. When town staff... During the last five years, it has been very difficult dealing with town staff regarding this project. One reason is that they are talking out of both sides of their mouth. On the one hand, town staff is making public statements such as, quote, "Nothing has happened yet with this project", and, quote, "We are at the beginning of the project, and the public normally isn't even involved this early in the project", to quote two of their favorite statements. On the other hand, the town has signed a development agreement with the developer. The state has signed a, quote, "binding agreement with the developer". There is a signed lease agreement with the developer and a short-term tax agreement with the town, the developer, and the state. Both things cannot be true at the same time. More proof that town staff is not being transparent is that town staff withheld these documents, as well as the rejected proposals from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since 2016, I have brought to the attention of anyone who will listen at Town Council meetings, RTM meetings, planning and zoning meetings, that there was, there has been zero transparency from the town and zero input from the neighbors regarding this project. Zero. That is the truth. When town staff makes a statement that this project has been, quote, "transparent from the beginning", it is not true. They are not telling the truth, and I am mad about it. This proposal is a mega-development in a little neighborhood. It is inappropriate, too dense, completely not in character with the neighborhood, and must be drastically scaled back. At the RTM Finance Committee meeting last week, we learned that in both purchase and sales agreements for the Route 184 project that you just talked about and the Colonel Ledger School project, there is language that states, quote, "development which is complementary to the existing and surrounding neighborhood", quote. Why is that standard not applied to the Mystic Oral School property? It is important that elected and appointed officials, as well as town staff, consider and move forward on projects that are reasonable, appropriate, and good for the town and the community. This mega-development proposal is not good for the Mystic Oral School property, is not good for the northeast section of town, and is not good for the town of Groton. I will be your every step of the way fighting against this mega-development project for the Mystic Oral School property, as well as to support a proposal that is appropriate, reasonable, and just like other development in town, quote, "complementary to the existing and surrounding neighborhood". Hopefully, the Town Council will represent its constituents in the northeast section of town fairly and with the same thoughtfulness and concern that the NOANC residents receive for the NOANC School property.
One minute.
Municipal elections are just eight months away, and residents of the northeast section of town should ask all Town Council and District 5 RTM members one question. Do you support the Mystic Oral School Property Mega-Development Project? Yes or no? If yes, then do not vote for them. Vote for candidates that you support and that support you and that do not support the mega-development proposal for the Mystic Oral School property. Anyone who would like to join me in opposition to this outrageous mega-development, please contact me. My email is available on the RTM members list on the website or please email info@stopthebluffing.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everybody tonight who's speaking, whether it be councilors or staff or members of the public, to please be respectful of each other and of town staff and to choose your words carefully as far as making remarks that might be considered slanderous. Next up, Rebecca Welt is, yes, Ms. Welt is here. You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Welt. My husband and I own 32 Boulder Court, which backs to the Oral School, and I have grave concerns about the proposed project by Ressler Homes, most importantly, the density issue. The surrounding neighborhoods consist almost entirely of single-family homes on reasonably-sized lots. People bought these homes in part because the neighborhood is so quiet and peaceful. The project at the Oral School, proposed by Ressler, will consist of 931 living units, adding over 1,000 people and as many cars to the roads. This will impact traffic throughout Mystic, especially Oral School Road, Cow Hill Road, High Street, River Road, and the Fieldcrest and Woodcrest neighborhoods. The population of Mystic will increase exponentially. There will be significant blasting required for this project. Boulder Court homes have wells. If our wells are damaged by blasting, our homes have no water, and they are thus unlivable. Our septic tanks and foundations are at risk of damage as well, as are those on, in the homes on Oral School Road, Hancock Drive, and Cow Hill Road. Such a development, huge development perched above the Mystic River will have an enormous environmental impact. Not only will the habitats of countless wildlife be destroyed, but pollutants from generated by this development will run straight downhill and into the river, devastating the ecosystem. I cannot imagine why the planning department thinks this is a suitable project for Mystic, and I know the current zoning does not allow it. I am concerned that Ressler Homes has never built a development of this scale before. Why are we allowing them to use Mystic as their dress rehearsal? This project is coming under the banner of economic development, but I would ask at what cost? It increases the population drastically, creates a traffic nightmare, and destroys the character and livability of the already existing neighborhoods. Further, it opens the door to similar projects in other neighborhoods. Are apartment buildings with parking garages a part of the plan for the Butler School property a few years down the road? Massive overdevelopment that will have a serious negative impact on the already established neighborhoods isn't smart growth. It's short-stated and destructive. I worry that the council is very willing to listen to a developer who wants to use Mystic as an experiment. I would ask that you listen to your neighbors, your constituents instead, and please consider one of the more reasonably-sized proposals for development that you have received from other groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welt. Next, we have Scott Westervelt. Mr. Westervelt, you have the floor.
Thank you very, thank you very much. My name is Scott Westervelt. I live at 7 Boulder Court, Mystic, Connecticut, right below where this development is planned. I read the op-ed yesterday in the New London Day, and quite frankly, while it sounds good for most people, it didn't address some of the major issues, some of which are the traffic concerns. As Becca just pointed out, the blasting. And also, I guess, one of my biggest concerns is the traffic that's going to be going up and down Oral School Road, where the developer has already said that this is going to be built in phases. And if he can't complete Phase 1, he's not going to move on to Phase 2, which means he's not going to build, he's not going to fix the buildings. He's not going to build the access road. So he's not going to do anything to alleviate the traffic. It's actually going to make it worse. One of my other concerns is the Pratt Building. If, back in the late 90s, they determined that the Pratt Building was unusable and unsafe because of the pool and the chemicals are tearing up the foundation and everything, how much is it going to cost for Ressler to refinish that, to refurb that and make it a usable space eventually that they will turn over to the town of Groton, and we are going to have to pay for the upkeep of that? However, his, in his own words, Mr. Ressler said he's going to be doing reasonable renovations. Nobody has defined what those reasonable renovations are, and where does that stop? One of the other big question marks is, you mentioned in the letter that you sent, the new hires. I'm sorry, when I was a new hire, I didn't make near enough money to live in a luxury apartment. So you're looking at people who are basically new hires. They're fresh in the workforce. And these people are going to be spending at least 50% of their incomes to live in apartments. There's no return on investment when you live in an apartment. You're not going to grow a family when you're living in an apartment when you're spending that much money. There's nothing to keep you there. So I'm just not sure how 931 apartments in that space is going to ever be filled. And if you can't fill it, again, he's going to stop building. And there's, I see nothing in any of the paperwork that holds him accountable for the other phases and for what he intends to do to the development. So the, another question I have is, and I had asked this before. There were a number of proposals that were brought out. I believe that they were done backwards because the Planning and Zoning Committee was not part of any decision in any of these proposals. There were a number of proposals and a number of studies that talked about smaller developments, more community-oriented, things that would fit into that neighborhood. I don't recall any studies that suggested a 931-unit mega-development. And so I'd just like to know, was this brought to the Town Council before the decision was made? Did the Town Council ever get a chance to look at all the proposals? Or did they just take what a select couple of people at the planning department gave them to look at? That is distressing to me. So based on that, I just don't know how we can move forward if we really don't have a plan for how it's going to be implemented, how the phases are going to be done, and when is Mr. Ressler going to walk away? And when is he going to be forced to do the improvements to the property?
You have one minute, sir.
When is, when is Mr. Ressler going to be forced to do the improvements that is going to make this a usable facility? Now, from the people that I've been talking to, the organization that I'm working with right now, we know development has to happen. We want development to happen. But it's got to be reasonable, and it's got to fit into the neighborhood. And I'm sorry, 931 units does not fit in that neighborhood or in my neighborhood up here. And if anybody wants to talk about this, anybody who wants to join our group, please email us at info@stopthebluffing.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Westervelt. Next, I have Penelope Miller.
My name is Penny Miller, and I live at 56 Hancock Drive in Groton. I would like to respond to the op-ed from the Town Councilors entitled Mystic River Bluffs Is Development Groton Needs. The op-ed states, quote, "Council members ran on the principle of smart growth", meaning choosing to grow existing developed land rather than touch natural spaces. Part of smart growth is to combat sprawl", unquote. Mystic River Bluffs would do just the opposite of this. It would cover over what is currently open space with 32 newly constructed high-density apartment buildings. How is this in accord with the stated goal of leaving natural spaces untouched? And wouldn't this build-out be the very definition of sprawl? Another thing I find odd in the op-ed is what is said here, and I am quoting with some abbreviation in the interest of time, quote, "The Mystic River Bluffs redevelopment is poised to become the third-largest taxpayer. If we want money to ensure our high-quality schools, to support our award-winning parks, our amazing library, and to protect and grow our green space, we need to expand our tax base", unquote. Here, the Town Council is advocating destroying green space at the Mystic Oral School in order to get money to be used to protect and grow our green space. Does it make any sense to destroy green space in one place in order to grow green space in another? Further on, the op-ed continues to talk about the tax base, saying, quote, "We need to expand our tax base. When these new hires settle here, they will spend their income at our local shops and restaurants, providing yet another point of growth for our local economy", unquote. This editorial reflects the fact that those who are promoting Mystic River Bluffs are motivated by dollar signs and have not considered the potential downsides of this development. The potential downsides not mentioned in the op-ed are real. What are they? Some of the other speakers tonight have already mentioned them. They were, but they were curiously left out of the op-ed. There is no mention of the 931 apartments or the 100,000 square feet of commercial space or of the 1,500 to 2,000 renters who would constitute a 33% increase in the population of Mystic. There is no mention of the impact of 1,500 to 2,000 additional cars on the narrow streets of the surrounding neighborhoods and on Scenic River Road. The Mystic Oral School and the neighborhoods surrounding it have long been zoned for single-family, agricultural, and other low-density uses. This mega-development is wildly out of scale and incompatible with this setting and with Mystic as a whole. No housing complex of comparable scale exists anywhere in southeastern Connecticut. Perhaps it is understandable that a New York-based developer like Ressler Homes would be insensitive to such considerations. A far more suitable proposal for the Mystic Oral School was submitted by the Groton Housing Authority and its local Connecticut partners. This proposal called for 192 housing units.
You have one minute, ma'am.
While this would still be denser than current zoning allows, it would have far less impact on the neighborhoods and infrastructure in the area. And together with the three other multifamily housing projects planned for the town, for town-owned land, would provide needed housing stock in Groton. This would be a more responsible development and is more in line with other apartment developments in the area. But this proposal was not shared with the public and was rejected by the Groton Planning and Development Department in favor of Mystic River Bluffs. If Groton Planning and Development staff had asked Mystic residents what they wanted for the Oral School, they would have found few, if any, residents in favor of the Mystic River Bluffs proposal. The vast majority of Mystic residents want to preserve the low-density rural character and historic charm of Mystic. The Mystic River Bluffs proposal is far too dense and too big for the site, for the neighborhood, and for the town. It is a grab for tax revenues at the expense of quality of life in Mystic.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Next on the list is Alma Richards, but I don't see Ms. Richards in the list of speakers. Are you here, Ms. Richards?
I'm not on.
Are you with Mr. Richards, Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So Alma Richards is next. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Okay. Alma Richards. I live at 220 Cliff Street. This, I had written this up, so I'm going to read it to you. I would like to speak to you about the Mystic River Bluff, Bluffs project. First, I would like to address the issue of sophistry being used here. A sophistry is a lie with a bunch of truths packed around it. It still has the lie as the core. My husband is retired from Pfizer, and although Pfizer's pay scale is very good, it was not beyond the industrial standard. The electric boat pay scale is also within the industrial standard. The idea that people move to our area to work at EB and Pfizer will be given these enormous salaries and will want to live in a one-bedroom luxury apartment are almost laughable. The lie is that people that come to Pfizer or EB are very wealthy. They're not. They're just normally paid people. We are trying to entice a group of people that do not exist. The second problem is oxymoron, which puts luxury apartment and one-bedroom apartment in the same sentence. People who want a luxury apartment do not want a one-bedroom apartment. They want at least two so they can keep their guitar collection or their office or their guest room for Mom in another room. Luxury does not, luxury does not picture images of sleeping couches. In order to afford a luxury apartment, there will have to be two incomes, and that means two cars. This puts these apartments further and further out of a new employee's reach. When you start with sophistries and an oxymoron, you end up with a low- When you start with sophistries and an oxymoron, you end up with a low-income housing that the builder can do anything with he wants, and we are stuck with the results. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Next on the list, I have Jeffrey Richards.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, and greetings to you on the town council and to mayor. Uh, I have a few comments about your Mystic River Bluffs editorial published.
Could you state your name and address for the record, Mr. Richards? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, too. Uh, my name is Jeffrey Richards. I live at 220 Cliff Street in Mystic. Thank you. And I have a few comments about the Mystic River Bluffs editorial published yesterday in the New London Day newspaper. Uh, I call your article, uh, mere propaganda. I'll say it again, mere propaganda, because it did not address any of the negative issues important to town residents. First, it did not mention the bluff's extreme traffic impact, which the thousands of new people will cause to the adjacent residential areas, or the I-95 exit 89, and which indeed imperiled the entire Mystic area. Do you now think shutting down Mystic is a good idea? Are you folks hiding a magic wand? Mystic is not Disneyland. Real people live here. And second, all town citizens should be rather disgusted about how town professionals and even maybe some of you on the council have been handling the proposal. It did not first seek rezoning of the property, actually hid other good proposals from public comment, and now seem to be in the process of intimidating the Planning and Zoning Commission to comply with your dictatorial wishes or else. So ladies and gentlemen, I think it's time to think about having a town referendum about any proposal there. Please do so. Greed is not a reason to ruin Mystic. And I thank you very much. And I'm finished unless you have questions.
No, thank you, sir. Next, we have Eugenia Villagra. Hello, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Eugenia Villagra. I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Groton Conservation Advocates in response to the op-ed piece that the town council members signed in yesterday's New London Day concerning redevelopment of the Mystic Education Center. I would not be honest if I did not say that we are greatly disappointed that the council has rushed out to fully embrace Ressler Homes Mystic River Bluffs project without also recognizing the serious concerns that have been raised, including traffic, noise, light pollution, blasting damage, and the sudden urbanization of a semi-rural area. This is a matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we believe that the council should follow their deliberations without trying to unduly influence that body. We have been following the plans of the newly named Mystic River Bluffs with considerable interest and have learned a number of things that council members did not mention in their enthusiastic support for this project. First and foremost, while we strongly support mixed-use development in Groton and have no problem with redevelopment of the site, we are increasingly concerned, even alarmed, about the gigantic size of this project and its impact on western Groton and Mystic. Your op-ed piece did not mention that the redevelopment has already expanded from 750 units to 931 units. If each unit averages two persons, we are looking at a whole new town of roughly 2,000 people being developed right up the hill from Mystic Village. What will the impact be on Mystic residents' quality of life with this huge invasion? Seismic is the word that comes to mind. The project has also grown in terms of acreage. Mr. Ressler has privately purchased at least 16 acres to add to the 48 acres he's receiving from the state. In theory, he could acquire more. The ledgers, the ledges, a very large apartment complex in Groton built in 2005, has 339 units and occupies 24 acres. That complex is dwarfed by the Ressler plans. Other matters not mentioned in your op-ed, traffic management will be extremely difficult. Mystic Village, already a traffic nightmare for Grotonites and tourists, will become completely gridlocked by the numbers of cars added. The neighborhood will be overwhelmed, which is incompatible with Section 9.4 through 6C of our zoning code requiring that, quote, "The design elements of the proposed development be compatible with the development in the district and surrounding area, and do not hinder or discourage the orderly development and use of other properties within the area or alter the essential characteristics of the area." A floating zone will be overlaid on the area to allow for a new town to be built. What will this mean? What will stop Ressler from adding more units while zoning is floating and limbo? The Planning and Zoning Commission was shown only one plan by town staff as the preferred plan for this property, so planning and zoning has not been able to do any comparisons with other applicants for developing the site. The impacts of both water delivery and sewage removal systems for this huge development on the area are so far unknown. And what about the 16-acre forested parcel purchased by Ressler that will be clear-cut to make way for an access road and additional housing? Is that redevelopment or new development? In closing, we ask that the Groton Town Council qualify its endorsement of this project with recognition of the need to address the potential negative impacts as well as the benefits of Mystic River Bluffs, and encourage a redevelopment that is compatible with our existing neighborhoods and quality of life. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking for the next speaker, and I don't see Mr. Goodrich in the list of attendees. John Goodrich? Okay. Um, I see three other people that are here. Mr. Burt, I am seeing Tammy Dela Cruz, Jim Mitchell, and Mike Whitney. Are they here to speak under Citizens' Petitions? Mr. Burt?
I know that Tammy Dela Cruz and Mike Whitney is, I, I've not had contact with Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, very good. So let's start with Tammy Dela Cruz, please, if you could state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thanks. My name is Tammy Dela Cruz, and I live at 9 Cory Row in Groton, Connecticut. First, I want to say, one thing that has not been said, I would like to first thank all of you Mystic Knowing and Groton Long Point. I'm writing today in favor of Mystic River Bluffs development project. Listening, and, they're high. I have listened time and that our town is tired. Listen time, time again regarding, regarding the empty properties just sitting vacant and not being utilized. The councils have run on economic development just to be met with roadblocks. I for one, project is going to be a great addition. The developer has been more than the wants and needs of the town. There's, though, be a part, a path, or, it'll bring too much traffic and crime. Put it somewhere else, probably Groton Town. I can tell you, held outside of a pub down here in Groton Town. And I have nothing more that have to...
Madam Mayor, can you?
These properties are being held.
Excuse me, Ms. Dela Cruz? I'm not sure, it's just me, but I'm having trouble hearing. Can the rest of the council hear?
No, she's cutting it out.
Okay, you're cutting in, I thought, didn't know if it was just me or not, but I see Councilor Obray and Councilor Bordelone are having the same issue.
Can you hear me right now?
We can hear you right now, yes, but we missed much of what you were saying. I'm sorry.
Okay, so you heard my name, right?
I heard your name. And I heard your address.
First of all, I want to say that I'm in favor of the Mystic Bluffs. Um, I have listened time and, uh, I've listened and waited time and time again how our taxes are high. I've listened time and time again that our town is looking tired. I've listened time and time again regarding the empty properties just sitting vacant and not being utilized. The council and prior councils have run on economic development just to be met with roadblocks. I for one, think that this project is going to be a great addition to our towns. From what I have read and watched, the developer has been more than accommodating to the wants and needs of the town. This seems to be, though, the pattern to these roadblocks on my backyard. It will bring too much traffic and crime. Put it somewhere else, probably Groton Town, I'm assuming. And I can tell you that I know about crime, because my son lost his life right down the street here in Groton Town. And, and Groton Town would be more than happy to have some economic development in our neck of woods, something like the Bluffs, but we don't have the full view that you guys have. So if this property is for sale, and the buyers are willing to listen to some of the wants of the town, what gives anybody the right to stand away? I would ask that those partaking in deciding the fate of the project make their decisions based on the good for our whole community. Too many times, us of Groton pay for the decisions made to please, implement their time out, so that we can carry a beautiful space out of a rundown property. You hear me? You still hear me?
You're, you're cutting in and out again. Ms. Dela Cruz, did you, you sent this as a written comment, correct?
Yeah, I apologize, I couldn't, I don't know what's wrong with, I like, I, it was fun.
Um, yeah, you're, we're not able to hear you. Um, I apologize. But we do have your, we do have your written comment. If this is, if your verbal statement is the same as your written statement?
I just, I really, can you hear me right now?
Yes.
Can you, okay, I'm really sad that other businesses have not come out to support this, because if we, we're, if we really thought about it, this would really bring, economic development, the development brings a lot of resource money to the area. And then, I just want to say before I end, we completely constantly cry about our taxes, but we need to do something in order to make a tax base. And we're not asking for Disney World to go up in Mystic. What we're asking for is a beautiful area that people have purchased, and I just hope that this goes forward, and I hope that you can share what I had put down. I am sorry for the technical difficulties.
That's all right. Thank you. And your comment will become part of the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I have, let's see, you said Mike Whitney, correct? Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Ah, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I do not support the Mystic River Bluffs project as currently envisioned. The plans, which include nearly 1,000 new residential units, are simply too big for the area. Uh, the land and the surrounding area are rural by definition. The proposed project, if realized, would be taller and more built up than any other part of Groton, and wholly inconsistent with this rural part of town. I find it troubling that the town signed a developers' agreement without substantive input from the Planning and Zoning Commission or nearby residents. Failure to involve all stakeholders early on often leads to suboptimal outcomes. It would have been far better to have been, have more constraints on the overall size and uses before or during the proposal stage. I believe more appropriate options for the community would have risen to the top if that had been the case. I also don't understand why the town is supportive of creating a new urban center in a rural area rather than supporting the current ones we have. I'm hoping that zoning will protect us from oversized and ill-placed projects such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. And I have Jim Mitchell as an attendee. Mr. Mitchell, did you wish to speak under Citizens' Petition, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, town councillors. Um, I apologize, my name is James Mitchell. I live at 47 Boulder Court, and obviously that's next to the property that's being discussed. I apologize for not submitting, uh, statements prior to this, but my comments will be brief. As a resident of the community and living next to the property and being well aware of the issues concerning taxation in our community, I support the need to develop the property next to Boulder Court. My concern is, uh, would be repetitive, and, and it's concerning the size, the traffic, the use of the facilities, and, uh, just the number of cars that will be in this area. So I'm listening for, I attended a meeting back in November 2019. The project then was a lot smaller. I'm concerned that I'm now listening to numbers like, uh, over 1,000 people with 2,000 cars. That's a significant impact. I don't know if we've done a study at all. I'm just concerned about the size of the project. I do know that we need to increase our tax base, and I agree with that. Uh, it's just the size of the project on this property and making sure that the hidden costs, I don't come back to increase, uh, a cost to the taxpayers. So thank you for allowing me to make some comments.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And I think that is everyone that signed up to speak. All right, very good. So we are on to Roman numeral six, responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Do any councillors wish to respond? Councilor Obray?
Is it all right to make a statement, or is this just for questioning?
This, this should be, um, just responding to the, the concerns of the citizens or responding to the petitions of the citizens. Um, it's not meant to, you can ask a question if you'd like, but you're welcome just to make a statement.
Madam Mayor, your rules, yeah, your rules definitely say it's, it's strictly for clarification purposes, not for making statements or, or comments such as what, you know, someone might want to make.
Well, I'll make a clarification then, if I can, uh, for everybody that spoke tonight.
Point of order, I'm sorry. We're on responses to citizens' petitions.
That's correct.
You can make statements.
Councilor Obray, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a clarification. This was not a decision that was made by the planner. This was a decision that was made by a group of which I was part of. It was a very unusual circumstance in the fact that this was state-owned property, and the town was trying to make it into something viable. And, uh, an entire group worked on this. I will tell you that the planner was not part of some of the meetings, because, uh, we were going through, um, the finite items of trying to work with the state, my, not myself personally, but listening to, um, I was part of it, but I wasn't the one talking with the state. Uh, the planner was part of it, economic development was part of it, there was, uh, members of the council, representatives, a rep from the RTM, and, um, a past planner, Susan, I can't remember her last name, that's now in Stonington. And, uh, this was, uh, was a long process. It was, it was done in a manner that, all the meetings were, uh, put out that we were having. Uh, we had presentations to the council. Uh, there was, I believe, a public hearing at one point. But it was very different in the fact that the state has very different regulations. I would, I would tell you that it was done in a very honorable way, and I'm very upset that anybody would suggest anything different. We have an excellent, excellent, um, planning manager, EDC manager, division head, whatever you want to call them, but they do an excellent job. They're extremely professional. And there was no, no backdoor deals. This was done to try to put the property back into a useful site. I... I hear your concerns. They certainly will be addressed in some manner, but I take. I am very, very upset by some of the comments tonight about the caliber of the people that we have. That, and I'm very upset with the way that planning and zoning indicate led to the same thing. I'm more than happy to talk with anybody about the process. It, and I can only state again that it was done in the most professional manner. And it was done with with striving to make Groton a better place to live. This is Groton. It is not Mystic. It is Groton. Thank you.
Do any other councilors wish to speak at this point? Counselor Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. I also want to um, second what Counselor Obrey said. I have heard things that there were deals being done that behind closed doors, and I will tell you right now. I was not part of this. I have not witnessed anything of such. Everything that has been done has been done in the open at council meetings, at all public forums. A preferred developer was chosen. It was brought to us, and it had been discussed. Everything has been on the, out in the open. When people say we're rushing this, we have been working on this for years. This has, this began three years ago. This is not something that's been rushed. We have been working on it for three years. But I understand your concerns. These are concerns that I completely understand. The traffic, the size of it. I understand those things. But these are things that could enhance also our community. So it's, we're still in a stage where things are being worked out. But if this project does not go forward, I don't know what's going to happen to that property. I can just imagine it may just sit there for another twenty to thirty years deteriorating. Because I I don't know how much more the state would work with us if we're not willing to go forward and do some type of economic development up there in the plan that's um, that they've signed off on. So I thank you for coming out and giving us um, all your information and sharing your thoughts with us. But I also would like people to be a little bit open-minded on some of these things and see if some of this can work out. But thank you, and as I said, it's, it's, we're all here trying to do what we think is best for the community. And I live in Mystic, and I don't think having a development there, and I used to live in Fieldcrest. I don't think it's going to change the essence of Mystic. I just truly do not. If anything, I think it will help enhance us. It is not an area that people go to all the time. You don't see it now, and it's, it's overgrown and deteriorating at the time, right now. And and people aren't upset about that at the moment. So if something else goes in there to actually make it better and usable and on a property that has sewer and it has water and it has electricity, and that's um, how it's being redeveloped. It's, it, if it's privately owned, it's not considered open space like that. Um. So I thank everybody for coming out, and and I would just ask people to please have an open mind and maybe see some of the good that may that could possibly come out of this, and I thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank everybody to come out that came out tonight to speak either for or against. I think it's very important to have an opinion, and I wish we had more people show up to public comment. So it's great um, to hear and represent your side of town. It's important because we are elected by the folks across town, and it's important to hear your concerns because you live there and you have a different insight of what goes on in the day to day. So I respectfully, you know, am grateful for your knowledge and the things you have to say. I also just wanted to ask a clarifying question maybe to somebody from the town staff, either John or anybody that's John Reiner. Someone spoke about the phase one and the phase two. Is it possible to address that in in relationship to what that will mean to us?
This is John Reiner. This project, again, in however it is built, again, when, when I talk about how there is no formal application before us, so there could be a first phase of the project. The developers indicated that they would build it in phases because you don't build something of any development like this just all at once. I believe as they're talking now, their first phase would be multifamily housing units. Off the top of my head, I think it was somewhere around the two hundred and fifty unit phase count for that first phase, and he had indicated that they wouldn't begin working on the second phase until they were nearing completion of construction and or after the units were starting to get filled to make sure that they can actually fill them up. A lot of these things, a lot of the questions that are being brought up, it's difficult to give, I think, the level of answer that people are seeking because it is still so early in the project. A lot of the studies haven't been done. So um, also, the Planning and Zoning Commission can and does regulate phasing on projects like this. And that's something that the commission will require during any approval process.
Okay, so, so nothing's fine at this point. The phase, the phasing and the determination from the planning and zoning, and no studies have been done yet. Has any traffic studies or environmental studies of runoff or any other studies of noise in the area? Has any of that been done yet?
No, I know the developer has done some very preliminary studies, but again, there isn't even zoning that's been written yet to accommodate this development. So to write the zoning before the town has really even determined what a use of the property could be, it, it, it gets very difficult. So for the developer to go spend literally millions of dollars designing this project, doing these studies, designing the stormwater, when the zoning hasn't even been written to determine how many units they can get on the property, the intensity of the development, it, it's, that's definitely a, a very difficult thing for them to do. That, that's, that's too much risk in any development.
So. So, okay.
Those things will be done. So once the zoning is actually written, then the developer has to even apply to land that zoning on the property. And the developer has to then apply for some type of a master plan approval. But the Planning and Zoning Commission gets to determine the intensity of and the uses of that development based upon the zoning and then what, and those studies that are done at that point in time, based on the traffic, based on the environmental, based on other items. And then we also have very strict standards in town when it comes to light pollution, landscaping, buffering, as well as our stormwater standards.
Okay, and so this will come back to the council when those decisions are started to be made, correct?
The council does not approve of the actual plan. They don't approve of what the the Planning and Zoning Commission does. The council will be looking at this project in the future as it relates to tax increment financing, which without tax increment financing, this project doesn't happen. The Planning and Zoning Commission also will deal with the intensity of the project. If I didn't really stress that. That hasn't been decided yet. So do I think this development's going to be nine hundred and thirty-one units at the end of it? No, I don't. I don't know what the right number is, and that's something that the Planning and Zoning Commission has to determine, working with the developer and the, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods, looking at the town. There, there's, there's still a lot more questions on this than there are answers because it is so early in the process.
Okay, so there's definitely more more to come as far as what is appropriate for the the landscape. And um, could you, could you speak to the, where it came from seven fifty to nine thirty-one as some people spoke tonight?
Sure. So when Restler first made their proposal, they were talking about a development that would range somewhere between seven hundred and eight hundred and fifty units. Also during that time, they were, from the very beginning, looking at a piece of property across the street. That was about, that's about sixteen acres in size because one of the things they heard very clearly was they didn't, people around Mystic Education Center did not want the development to go through the existing side roads down past Boulder Court. So the developer was looking to acquire that property to build a new road that would then connect down to the red light. They didn't share.
Reiner, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, we, we need to keep in mind that this isn't, and this is not an agenda item tonight, and this is simply response to citizens petition. So I would ask everyone to keep that in mind, please.
All right, so I was, I'm responding to, I'm going through my list of all the citizens who spoke and getting clarifying questions based on what they asked. Is that appropriate, Mayor?
This needs to be really brief because this is not an agenda item tonight. Madam Clerk, did you wish to say something at this point?
Oh, actually, I just needed to get a piece of information that was said earlier by Counselor Obrey regarding a member of the RTN that was serving on the selection committee.
I'm sorry, we can, we can deal with that later. Counselor Bordelon has the floor to finish up her response to citizens petition. Thank you.
For full disclosure, is there a time limit under each one of these? I just want to make sure that.
We should be sticking to our general three-minute rule on this. So if you could, we have other councilors who have their hands up, please.
Okay, so I can, we can circle back. I just want to be fair that I'm responding to what people had asked. And I didn't know there was a time restriction on this section of our rules.
Right, so, so you're to be responding based on your.
And I am.
Personal knowledge to what the citizens have said, yes.
Right, and and it has been done at other meetings where councilors have asked questions to the staff on behalf of what the citizens are asking as I'm taking my notes.
Yes, again, this is not an agenda item, so we have to keep it brief, please. Thank you.
So I'm in full scope to ask the questions I'm asking, correct?
These need to be brief, please.
Well, I think it's important to address the citizens' concerns, and if it takes time, then we should be allotting that and not shutting it down, but.
Again, this is not an agenda item tonight.
Right, but we've never limited it before, and it, there's no time limit, nothing in our rules that states such. And it states that we can ask clarifying questions regarding to citizens, plural, questions for clarifying, and that's what I'm doing. So if I'm not able to address every citizen, then that should be fully disclosed beforehand. So should I pick and choose which citizen I want to address tonight?
You should, you should be knowledgeable that there are other councilors who also would just.
I understand that.
Follow suit as the other councilors have already spoken, please. We're wasting a lot of time on this aspect.
Point of order, point of order.
Yes, Counselor.
These are clarifying questions to the people who made the statements, not to town staff. It's not discussion. It's just a quick question to clarify what they may have said, or otherwise it's a response, not a discussion. Thank you.
And we've done this in the past where they've asked questions for clarifying points to town staff. So, okay, um. I disagree with that. Um, so um, do you want to circle back to see if there's more councilors that want to speak, and then since there's a rule of of this too? I, I just think it's important to address the citizens' petitions. That's why we have it. We only have it once a month. People came out, and I think it's only fair that I ask clarifying points to the matters in which they ask, so if.
Right, so as Counselor Heath said, this is supposed to be clarifying what the citizens have said.
And that's exactly what I was doing.
So are you, do you need to speak to one of the citizens, Counselor Bordelon?
I would, you, at the beginning of our meeting, you asked for everyone to speak respectfully, and I'm advocating and asking about phase one, which was asked by one of the constituents. The noise and pollution, which was asked by the citizens, and I asked for clarifying. As I was new to the council when this first came about, and so I was asking what things. So the fact that our town staff, John Reiner nicely was trying to elaborate, and that's beyond, you know, I wasn't going to stop him. So me asking my clarifying points, I feel.
Why don't you ask another clarifying point, and then we'll go on to Counselor Heath?
No, it's just frustrating that every time I speak that there's a change, but any other meeting, if you go back, other people ask it in the same manner, and they're not shut down. That's all I ask. I ask for the same.
Point of order, point of order.
Yes, Counselor Parker, what is your point of order?
It is in our agenda packet, under receipt of citizens' positions, the responses to citizens' petitions. All matters can, under consent calendar, agenda, we're supposed to be responding to the citizens. This is not the time to ask clarified questions to the town staff. We're supposed to be talking to the citizens and responding to that. We can provide them answers later and get that for them, but we do have to move the business along.
Thank you. Your point is taken, Counselor Parker. Counselor Bordelon, I'm going to go on.
I'm going to let everyone speak, but I'm just going to say in future, I encourage that we hold that same rule. When they ask questions for clarifying to the staff. Moving forward, it has not been done that way.
Review your rules.
All right, we need to, we need to stop, please.
That's inappropriate, and I have a right to say.
Stop, please.
Well, Mayor, you brought this up, and I have a right.
The rules have not changed.
No, it doesn't matter. The point is.
Point of order.
Counselor Obrey, what is your point of order?
No one's treated the same.
Counselor Bordelon, or Counselor Obrey, what is your point of order?
My point of order is, is the rules chair, I'm telling you, posture you are out of order. What is stated there that was just read for you is what we are supposed to be doing. Read your rules. Don't argue with people. Read your rules.
With all due respect, I will just say clearly that I'm done. Other meetings, people.
You're out of order, Counselor Bordelon.
Fine, I'll be out of order. I, other meetings.
You're out of order, Counselor Bordelon.
Questions, and it was never.
You're out of order, Counselor Bordelon.
Change the rules by the minute.
Counselor Heath, the rules have not changed. Counselor Heath, you have.
It's how you interpret the rules and how you choose to do them on different days. That's what changes.
Counselor Heath, you have the floor.
Yes, so let me know if I start breaking up. I think I have bad connection. Just want to thank everyone for coming out today and speaking. It's, it's really important to hear the concerns of the neighbors. I, for example, I hadn't even considered the concept of, or concern about the wells. So learning about different parts of town is important, but that said, you know, I remain in full support of something that's transformational and really beneficial to to the town and will attract young people to come. I did have a couple of responses. One of the gentlemen who spoke tonight said that I, people coming to work at EB or Pfizer, they may not be rich. They're showing up with student loans and they're not looking to make it, spend fifteen hundred dollars on an apartment. I actually, I graduated with only thirty-eight thousand dollars in loans, and I spent fifteen hundred dollars in an apartment fifteen years ago, because that's what was available, and that's kind of what I wanted to do. So you can't really buy a house when you've got all those student loans behind you. You're looking for a place to live, and you want to live someplace nice. So that being said, you know, I'm just, I'd say that was just sort of a response to that. Another thing to consider is, you know, I'm a little surprised, frankly, the Groton Conservation Advocates would tell us that this project is too large because my understanding is that they've been telling us since the beginning that we need to be looking at creating condensed population centers that encourage this kind of development. Where the land is already cleared, we already have infrastructure, we should be protecting the spaces that aren't built on. So I'm, I'm a little surprised by that, but thank you for for bringing it to our attention anyways. Always happy to, the, the person who called for referendum, if there are, what's the population in Mystic, six, seven, eight thousand people maybe? On that side, if there's a referendum, there's forty thousand people in the town. I don't think it'll go well, so I wouldn't be supporting a referendum. I think we should instead have conversations and figure out what fits into that neighborhood, what the state's willing to do, what we can do with Restler to get this project the support that it needs to go forward. Finally, I just want to remind everyone that he, and he thought that this project sounded, you know, pretty cool. It sounds like exactly the kind of thing that his generation is looking for. So I just want to, wanted to throw these things out there as a response. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Heath. I would like to echo Counselor Obrey and Counselor Franco's remarks regarding comments that have been made about town staff and about members of this town council who were participants in the preferred developer selection process. The town staff has. The town staff has worked diligently and honorably, as have our counselors, to bring forth a project that is beneficial to the town. We can disagree on certain aspects of the project, but I would like everyone to keep in mind when you say things like this about town staff, and when you say things like this about our council, it, it is problematic. So I would ask you to make your points without being disparaging to our volunteers and our staff. Thank you. All right, we are on to consent calendar. Counselor Baumgartner, would you move the consent calendar, please?
Let's all make a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Within the consent calendar, we have appointments and reappointments. We have minutes of February 2nd and February 3rd, and we have the special trust fund contributions. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, thank you. Communications and reports. We are on to town counselors first, and we will just make sure I'm on the right spot. Yes, this is other than committee reports, all right? So this is your report, other than committee reports. I have to save my long-term recovery for later. All right, so we have Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report other than just a friendly reminder to my fellow counselors that it is very hard right now, and I should say it has been very difficult over the last year, to maintain proper decorum, largely due to the fact that it's really hard to do meetings over Zoom. And I think we should acknowledge that, that it has been challenging, not just for this council, but for many organizations, civic groups throughout our community, and, you know, and some of our neighboring communities as well. And soon, hopefully, as soon as folks get vaccinated, we will have meetings in person again where it is, I believe, much easier to talk about the challenges confronting our community when you have face-to-face interactions. This is not a precedent we should get used to, conducting our town's business online. It is very difficult to have honest conversations with one another when we are doing meetings exclusively through Zoom. So I would just like to remind folks that, you know, we, it is hard, and it's okay to acknowledge it, but we have to maintain respect for one another. I, you know, I love working with each and every one of you, and I think, you know, again, moving forward as a council, let's pledge to work together on issues. It's okay to be passionate, but we have to allow each other to speak, and I think we can all be guilty of it at times. I certainly have as well. But it's important that we conduct the people's business without getting bogged down. So I know, I see some frustrating, you know, frustrated faces right now, and it's okay.
You're not telling what you've been doing. You're giving a speech. We don't need a speech.
There we go.
We had, Counselor, Counselor Baumgartner has one more minute of communications time.
Again, it's important to maintain proper decorum when we're addressing one another. We're adults. I've had the privilege of working with each of you in person in in-person meetings and over Zoom, but we have to learn how to talk to each other, look at each other, reason with each other, compromise with one another. We're better than that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Parker, do you have communications this evening?
As all of us have received communications regarding the Mystic Oral School, I can do my reports of attendance. Are we doing that at the end?
The only other thing we have at the end is the open agenda item, so now would be the time.
Okay, I, as most of you know, I attended the TVCCA meeting last week, and I want to let everyone know that there are, there is tax assistance if you need help doing your taxes. They do have the heating assistance program extended, and they do have it on the Facebook page. I will get more information and see if the town can post it up too, so that if someone needs help with their heating assistance, to contact them. They are, in January, they were highlighted on Channel 8 News, so that was wonderful, about their community resource coordination program. Let's see, and I attended the Black History Month celebration that was hosted by the town in the, honoring Raheem Carter. Very well put together. Thank you all who provided assistance, helped, and to the speakers, thank you very much. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Counselor Franco, do you have communications?
Thank you. And Counselor Parker, the tax assistance, I think is a very popular and highly-used program, and I think that's absolutely wonderful for our residents in our town who reach out. I think it's, locally, they help out over at the senior center as well.
Yes, ma'am.
No, that's great. Thank you. I also have communications from citizens regarding some topics around town, as well as the Mystic Oral School property for the old Mystic River Bluffs, both in favor and with concerns about the property as well. And I think that's about it for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Heath, do you have communications, sir?
I actually have nothing to report, but just to share with the public, my mother had her second COVID shot last week, and the only side effect that she had was a little bit of soreness in the arm. So don't, don't, don't panic. Go get your shots. Thank you.
That is good news. I'm pleased to hear that she received her vaccine. Counselor Aubrey, do you have communications, ma'am?
I, yes, just so that everybody would have a full disclosure, we are moving forward and meeting for proposals on the Pleasant Valley School project. And we have proposals on the table, and we're trying very hard to move that forward. Also, the beautification committee is moving forward, hopefully, for the spring kickoff. We will be doing a cleanup, and I'll be giving you more information on that because we'll be looking for volunteers, volunteers, volunteers. And I have talked with numerous people about the projects. I'm happy to talk with anybody about any part of it that I can to try to make it so that we can make this amicable to all, so that we can move forward. And I, I think that's all, oh, and I think that the, I don't know if it's exactly in place, but the rotary, the Grotton Rotary is going to assist with putting this new sign up at the intersection of 117 and 184. And the beautification committee will be doing plantings underneath it. And also, the beautification committee will be doing, hopefully in the very near future, some very unusual plantings for down in front of the Shenecroft Gulf area. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that update. Counselor Bordelone, do you have communications?
I'm just the same that everyone else received regarding the bluffs. Did speak to a couple of people. Some people have reached out as the playground at aquatic plains is being used more heavily, especially with COVID and wanting to be outside. Some citizens have expressed concerns with the cleanliness down there and trash and things. Unfortunately, not the town's problem, but I think it even made it posted up on a public page as well. But I, you know, I encouraged our citizens in our town to make sure they're picking up after being down there. But I'm not sure if possibly the town could look into checking to see if it needs repairs or cleanup down there. I could address that under the section when the town manager speaks. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez, do you have communications, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended, well, first I want to thank Parks and Rec for putting on an amazing event honoring our own local black history and recognizing the memory of Raheem Carter. I attended that with Counselors Baumgartner, Parker, and, and also the mayor. And thank you, Mayor, for speaking at the event. You did us all proud up there, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors of Perry, communication, sir?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, I, I was, I was approached by a retired secretary from one of our Grotton schools, and she showed the, the statements of what she'd been paid on an annual basis in her retirement pay, which is, in fact, is embarrassingly low. No one could survive on that retirement. But in any case, she said, hey, you've had cost of living increases on other town employees. Why haven't we gotten one? I know that's something that may go through the Board of Ed, but I think we should be in communication with the Board of Ed to ask them to at least step up and recognize that their employees also have needs. And if the town is going to respond to the needs of its town employees, it looks bad and it's inconsistent and unfair for Board of Education employees to not also get cost of living increases. So that was something I'll be sending a message on with the content of this. Other than that, I have no report.
We have a town council, RTM, Board of Ed joint meeting on Wednesday night, so tomorrow night, I believe, I think. So if Counselors of Perry, if you'd like, if you want to send me that in an email, I can relay it, or you're welcome to join us at the meeting and relay your concerns in person. So let me know what you decide. Thank you. So thank you to, I seem serbarious here from Parks and Rec and the DEI Committee, of which Counselor Parker and Counselor Melendez are a part, for their work preparing the memorial celebration for Raheem Carter that was held at the park. It was a lovely ceremony, and it was quite touching to see RTM member Perry and city counselor Carter speaking so tenderly about, about Raheem, and that was, that was wonderful. It was a wonderful event. We have, I've been dealing with, and a couple of other counselors have taken a look at a property that is not technically blighted, but there is some concern about the, the shape of the property. And, you know, we, we have one blight officer, one enforcement officer, rather, who has to handle all the building code enforcement, as well as any blight, plastics ordinance complaints, all of these things. And I know it is going to get busier, hopefully, with the development coming and the progress that's happening, hopefully, all over town. And so I have, I've written a letter to all of you, and I've asked Mr. Burt to weigh the merits of possibly adding a part-time blight enforcement officer. I don't know if that's possible, but I'm hoping that Mr. Burt can get back to us in the future and let us know if that is something that's possible to do, and the types of things that that person would be able to handle. And I appreciate town staff, Mr. Reiner included, Mr. Zanarene, Mr. Burt, taking a lot of the time and energy to answer the questions that I've had and that the citizens have had regarding this particular, this particular issue. So thank you very much for doing that. And that's it. All right, very good. Thank you, everybody, counselors, for speaking. We are on to Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting. Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The RTM met February 10th, and they did pass the, the grant that the Parks and Rec Department had, had won, which was a competitive grant for $344,388. That was to continue some bike routes, bike lane, a two-lane bike lane from Knollport to Southern Park with some lights. And a lot of, it was very, very well received by the RTM. I also want to report that the RTM has three vacancies. We just recently received, two weeks ago, resignation from Representative DeSiller Fleming. She, she, she didn't want to leave, but she had to. Hopefully, she'll come back and run again. We, so we have three, three vacancies for Democrats in districts two, three, and seven. And they, the RTM will be meeting next week, the Wednesday, the third, excuse me, third month, which is March, March 10th at 7:30. There'll be a Zoom meeting unless something changes between now and then, but I've not received any information about that. So, so we are busy preparing for budget meetings, sessions for the review of the budget. I sent out a availability calendar to all the department heads to try to make it easier for the RTM to, for their subcommittees to make meetings. We still, I still haven't heard yet what the floor leaders and the moderator decided how the formats are going to be, but I'll let you know as soon as I know. Okay, so town, town council, you're busy, you're busy, you're very, very busy. I just want to let you know that anything that we receive as far as communication under citizens' petitions are attached to the minutes. If you look online, you'll see them all, and what I have in our permanent record, I actually have paper permanent records also in the office. It has all of the citizens' petition in there also. So I don't want anyone to think that they're not being recorded for, for eternity. That's about it. I can't think of anything else that I need to tell you, but if I do, I'll communicate that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Town manager, 8D, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening. Going to make it fairly short. I too attended the Raheem Carter event last week, which is phenomenal. They did a good job putting it on. We are looking at, by the way, the, we noticed the sign is a little bit run down there, so we're looking at either fixing up the sign or putting it in brand-new with our new color signs, so we'll be looking at that. Last week or so, I've been really busy, busy with budgets, as finance staff has too. Our intent is to have the draft, first draft of our proposed budget done tomorrow. That gives us Thursday to review, and then it goes to print on Friday, so we're trying to get everything wrapped up tomorrow. I think I heard my, my Wi-Fi cut out in and out for a second there. I thought I heard someone mention, or Counselor Bordelone mentioned the trash, crashed in front of the Fort Hill there. Is that what I overheard at the last second of?
No, I, yeah, tons of people I saw that was already picked up, but some people are talking about trash at Aquatic Plains Park.
Oh, yeah, we, and Park staff went out there, and I went by too. There was very little. It was just a tiny bit. But in terms of the, we did hear a lot of comments over the weekend about the Fort Hill Road, and the, a tenant moved out, furniture was put out there over the weekend. Other people put stuff out there that basically doubled the size of what was out there. There was nothing wrong with what the, putting this stuff out, as long as they had a plan. The plan was to have somebody come pick it up today or tomorrow. However, I went ahead and our Public Works take it away. It didn't take us long to take it away yesterday. And then other than that, just mentioning enforcement, Director Reiner and I have been talking about, there's a lot of growth expected in the last, in the next year or two. And besides enforcement, another thing that may become critical is, is they're getting pressed on clerical. So that may become an issue very soon. So just something to keep in mind. Um, so that may become an issue very soon. So just something to keep in mind. Um, but there's a lot going on. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelain, you have a question for Mr. Burt?
Yes, um, I know that the walking track has been used a lot at Paquonic Plains Park, um, especially with COVID and not a lot of exercise. Um, is there any talk or, uh, plans to, um, re-level it back out and put some, uh, whatever crushed stone, whatever is on that walkway to level it back up over the time it's gotten worn down? It puddles on one side and it's not, you know, obviously in its best condition when it was originally put in. Um, it needs resurfacing. Is there any talk to?
Lucky for us, we have Director Barry here with us tonight who can address that.
Okay.
Mr. Barry?
Good evening. Mark Barry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Yes, that would be something that we would work on in the spring and we typically do routine maintenance on that track, uh, as issues come up. Uh, you're right, it, it has been used a considerable amount this past year, uh, given that a lot of other, uh, opportunities were not available for folks. So we certainly appreciate that. Uh, a- as far as, uh, it being wet, the drainage in that whole area is, is poor at best. And I, you know, I think more often than not, we see a small lake, uh, between the, uh, the fields and the roads. Uh, and there's just, there's not much we can do about that because of, uh, of, of poor drainage in the area. But we certainly will be addressing and, and making improvements to replacing material, lost material on the walking track at the, at the Paquonic Plains.
Okay. Is there any, um, thought of trying to put in a catch basin drainage of, um, any other outside of the bot? Has anything else been done to try to remedy the problems over there with the drainage? By be, maybe putting some plantings in or, um, you know, sometimes properties have to have a, uh, a basin to, to pull water away? Is there any other efforts?
Yeah, from what, from my understanding of the issue, and this has been ongoing for, for a number of years, is, uh, the, the water from Sutton Park actually drains back into Paquonic Plains. There's a, a culvert that goes underneath the road and the water actually drains back, uh, particularly when we have a lot of water. So I, I, I will talk with Greg Hanover, but I think they have looked at and exhausted, uh, all possibilities. Uh, additional plantings may be an option, a- as that would draw in water. Uh, so we could certainly look at that, uh, look for species that, that do well i- in a wet area. But I, I will talk, I will talk to Greg, uh, to see if there's, uh, i- if there is any other options available.
I think that'd be great in some, uh, different greenery or, 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 you know, shrubs or something that could, it would dress the area up. There's a lot of room there that some plantings would, would be fine up and down that whole area. Um, and the last thing that, um, I wanted to ask, um, because it's used so frequently and, you know, at night, um, there's not a lot of walking. I wouldn't want to see big lights over the top, but is there any thought or possible, has it ever been thought of to put some low ground, almost like you would have in your walkway? Um, so, you know, it wouldn't shine into the sky or bother neighbors and it would cut off maybe at eight o'clock or nine o'clock. But is there any, ever been any talk or is there any limitations to putting any lights in that area for walking ability? A couple of people reached out to me about that. A couple of people have reached out saying it'd be great as it gets dark early. There's nowhere to go to walk. There's no lights.
Yeah, that, that's an interesting suggestion, the, the idea of kind of low level lights. Uh, any discussion about lights have been more towards, you know, lighting up the fields, uh, to try to increase use. But that, I, I don't believe is an option because it's, it's my understanding when the, on the, uh, Paquonic Plains went in, uh, there was, uh, an understanding or some kind of a gentleman's handshake with the, with the neighbors that, um, you know, lights wouldn't be put up. Uh, but I, I would think that y- your proposal, uh, might not, uh, disturb the neighborhood too much by putting in those low lights that kind of reflect back down to the ground. It, you know, the, we could certainly look into that to see, um, to see how much something like that would cost and then, and then plan that out.
Okay.
That's a, that's an interesting, uh, interesting suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. Cause I think it would, um, with COVID not going anywhere, it would open up another great asset to be able to go, get out of work at four or five and still be able to go walk at least for another hour or two after work. And you can put, um, I looked at, you can put the, the low, low ones that maybe don't even go above your knee, but it lights up the pathway and it would just allow for, um, walking after, you know, up to a certain point. And it would allow, uh, it not to affect the neighbors, but you could do solar ones and ones that would cut off to say at seven or something like that too. So I appreciate you looking into it and, uh, thank you for that.
And I have seen that done in other parks with solar.
Yeah, it, it's a, it's a, it'd be a great asset. I think we would, we have, I mean, I've never seen so many people down there and it's great to see that park being used. And I, I, I use it and I, I think it would be, a couple of people at the end of our walks have said, wouldn't it be great if we had a little lights, we'd keep going? And I said, yes, I'll ask. So thank you.
I can't imagine it costing much.
Yeah, thank you for that.
And Councilor Franco.
Thank you. I don't know if mine's under department heads because I have questions about Parks and Rec.
So I think we're, I don't know if anybody else has manager. I don't see hands. So go ahead and go for it and we'll adapt.
Thanks. So just a little thing I had seen one time, um, with a Parks and Rec online was, uh, they had glow in the dark stones that they put down on a path and it looked really cool as well. Another thing for Paquonic Plains, I was, every time I drive by there and I see that water there, um, in the spring and summer. And I think to myself, wouldn't it be great to have ice skating down there? But I don't know. That's just a little comment. Um, but I, my question actually is related to the sign at the community center and how, um, how that, how's that going?
Well, we have a banner up. We've had the banner up for about a year now. And a- another part of that whole project was we were looking to do a, a mural. And with COVID, a- and the idea was to come up with a mural design and then have, um, you know, uh, high schools artists, student, artists or some group, uh, you know, or, or some kind of a community event where we could almost do like a giant paint by numbers, but clearly because of COVID that has, you know, that's been put on hold. But we are intending to do more than just put up, uh, the banner that exists there now.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all.
Councilor Heed, did I see your hand go up?
Uh, my apologies. That was a mistake. It's a, my air mouse.
That's okay. That's okay. That's what those cats are for, Councilor Heed. All right. I don't see any other hands. So we are on to committee reports. Um, I don't have anything from a committee of the whole. Chairman Melendez, anything from personnel and appointments, sir?
Yes, thank you. Um, at our last meeting, we, um, appointed or we recommended the appointment. We just appointed earlier today, um, Guinevere Depot Fairland. Um, if I'm not mistaken, the Fairland Commission now has a quorum. So, so that's a good thing. Thank you for everybody who volunteered. Um, one other committee I'd just like to highlight that is not even close to having a quorum is the Neighborhood Revitalization Zone. Um, so if you live in the PQ neighborhood and you want to, um, uh, volunteer to, you know, give some of your time to help revitalize your, your, your neighborhood, then, then you should think about contacting the town clerk and applying. Thank you.
Great. That's a great idea to mention that. Rules Committee, Chairman Aubrey.
Uh, no meeting, no report.
Public Safety Committee Chairman Baumgartner. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Franco, I can't hear you.
I have a question, um, related to when was, when has the rule committee, when was their last meeting and when do they think they might have another one?
Um, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head when the last one is, but, um, I'll be having one probably within the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Um, Public Safety Chairman Baumgartner.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Public Safety Committee meeting met on February 7th. Um, we, uh, began our review of the recommendations made by Cork, um, uh, with respect to, um, policing policy reforms here in the town of Groton. Again, um, big thanks to, uh, Committee Chair, uh, Thomas, as well as, uh, the bipartisan, uh, Court Committee, uh, for their due diligence and research. Um, uh, many councilors, uh, know that, uh, our committees held joint meetings and joint hearings, um, uh, while, uh, both committees were doing their fact finding. Uh, it was Cork that issued their report and recommendations, uh, to our committee. And so now we are deliberating on those. Um, we will, uh, have a meeting also in the next, uh, couple of weeks. Um, committee members, I've reached out to you. Thank you, uh, Council Franco, um, uh, for your response. And I know, uh, Council Bordelain, uh, also, um, is looking forward to, uh, our next meeting. Um, stay tuned. I would like to, um, I would encourage any councilors to participate in these meetings largely due to the fact that, again, what comes out of the Public Safety Committee will inevitably be voted on by, uh, both Cow and the, uh, Committee of the Whole, as well as the Town Council. Uh, these are very important, uh, issues. There are, um, you know, it goes without saying that thousands took to the streets declaring unapologetically that Black Lives Matter. And we have an obligation to not only discuss these policy reforms, but also implement changes that, um, that our community called for. And so again, my big thanks to, uh, the, uh, Chief of Police for participating in many of these meetings, um, as well as our, our town manager and our, our town attorneys. Um, we've conducted, um, uh, you know, several, uh, conversations and discussions, um, sometimes, uh, uncomfortable conversations about, uh, policing here in our community. Uh, so that is, I think, what our, we, again, um, you know, uh, Mayor, uh, Grenatoski, and the entire council, uh, approved, supporting this Public Safety Committee meeting last year. And again, as we continue to have these meetings and, um, maybe even one, um, one more meeting before we send a set of recommendations to the council, I would like, uh, to have a conversation with councilors about what your viewpoints are. Um, so again, thank you, uh, for your support. Um, and I, um, counsel, to Counselor Franco's credit, um, she did mention that this is not only, this is a standing committee that isn't, uh, that is deliberating on one issue, but could potentially down the road also deliberate on, uh, issues of cognizance of, you know, issues, um, with respect to other, uh, public safety concerns here in the community such as, uh, fire districts. And so I think that is a, a, a direction worth going as well. Um, but again, uh, thank you, committee members, and, and thank you, Counselor, um, uh, Counselor Heed for your participation as well, uh, prior to your resignation. Um, and, uh, nothing further to report.
Thank you. So we are on to new business at, let's see, uh, Roman numeral ten A, twenty twenty-one, six, nine, Bike Grotten Pump Track Presentation. This is page thirty-five in your packet. Um, and we have with us, uh, Mark Barry and Brian Kent. And I just want, um, to draw the counselor's attention to the recommended action. Town staff is looking for consensus to support Bike Grotten's Pump Track Initiative and authorize the manager to write a letter of support for the project. So, uh, Mr. Bird is looking for consensus in order to write a letter of support for what you're about to hear. Okay, so I will turn it over to Mr. Barry and Mr. Kent. You have the floor, gentlemen.
Good evening. Mark Barry, Director of Parks and Recreation. A couple of months back, Brian Kent, who is the president of Bike Grotten, which is a volunteer nonprofit, uh, avid advocacy organization, reached out to me and said, Mark, we, the Bike Grotten Group would like to, uh, uh, are proposing to put a, a, a pump track, uh, a bike pump track at the Paquonic River Walkway Park, uh, which is, for those of you, uh, just as kind of a reference point, that's at the end of Depot Road. On the right-hand side, there's a small playground there. There's a ten to twelve-car parking lot. And it's also one of the entrances to the Paquonic River Walkway. Uh, Brian said that they had looked at a number of different sites and were proposing to put a bike pump track there. Uh, they said that they were interested in, uh, fundraising to pay for the cost of the entire project. And, uh, so I said, well, Brian, the first step really is to bring it to the, the Parks and Rec Commission just to get their feedback. In February, Brian, uh, attended a, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting and presented the, uh, the idea of a pump track and, uh, the commission, after asking some questions, uh, thought that it was a, an initiative that they would like to see move forward. So, uh, I explained to Brian that the next step would be to go to the, to the council to get their endorsement. So, uh, a- at this time, I think I'm going to, cause I'm sure you're all wondering, what is a bike pump track unless you kind of Googled it online ahead of time? Uh, so I'm gonna, uh, at this point, turn it over to Brian and let him explain, uh, how they came to this decision and, uh, a little bit more about the bike pump track.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Thank you for your service. I'm going to share screen now so that you can follow along with this presentation. So you should be seeing the map of Groton. And we've selected a site based on the feasibility and suitability of the park that, uh, Mark described to you. But also is central location in the town and because of its location in the region. Uh, you've, um, you've heard from Bike Grotten previously related to complete streets. We also represent, um, the region and, uh, issues related to bicycle and pedestrian, um, interests. And we also are present at the Connecticut Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board meetings in Hartford. And one of our, um, recent initiatives, in addition to this, has been promotion of the Eastern Shoreline Path, which is a facility that's proposed from, uh, Westerly to, ultimately to New Haven. And the pathway will, uh, 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 pass by the site proposed for the pump track. And just to bring you up to date briefly, all the towns now along the route in our region from Stonington to East Line have registered support for a feasibility study, uh, to look at the, the proposed route for the path. We now go to the Council of Governments with our, our proposal for the study. The specific Groton community context, however, is even more interesting uh, because there are so many dynamic and exciting activities and, and, um, initiatives going on in this particular part of town. As you heard previously, and as you have heard, uh, from Mark, uh, about a grant, the town is successful, receiving only one of ten grants given out by the, the state Community Connectivity Program for a bikeway and multi-use path. That's shown in this slide in the green lines, uh, through the Fort Hill neighborhood, through Sutton Park, creating a loop route that gives residents of the neighborhood a safe bikeway facility, connecting the variety of destinations and facilities and resources in this area from Paquonic Plains Recreation Complex to the community center, to the library, to the, to the schools on the hill. We, we look forward to, uh, to that development. We also know that the, the existing GNS trolley trail comes up on the old, uh, trolley right-of-way and will be extended as part of that project. And that itself is part of what's proposed as the, the, um, Eastern Shoreline Path. You can see that the site is located at the nexus of these facilities. In addition, it's at the entrance to Bluff Point State Park, which is popular with mountain bikers. And it's also the southern terminus of the proposed Tri-Town Trail. So all of these facilities related to bicycling and outdoor recreation and transportation, they come together at this location. Now Bike Grotten promotes these kinds of, of initiatives, but we are also looking for ways that we can provide at a community level, specific improvements that give residents, um, uh, 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 recreational health-based resources. And a pump track is a small, but very effective facility. It's relatively low cost and very low maintenance that gives both youth and adults an activity that is, that is great fun. It is, that is very healthy and strenuous. Can be strenuous if you, if you, if you use it that way and, and, and refine skills such as balance and, and coordination. Now, looking more closely at the site itself, it's adjacent to the Amtrak line and the Paquonic River. It's on a site that was probably filled at one point. There are no contamination issues on the site. There's an existing parking area. There's a playground. And there's this large open grass area in the center that we have identified for the, for the track. In the next slide, you can see from the road view where we're proposing over there beyond the playground. And then this is what it looks like when it's drawn out on the ground. So this is a, this is schematic drawing of a typical pump track. It takes up about a quarter of the total area and we can move it closer or farther from the playground or, or there's no real site limitation as far as where it would sit in here. And we can see that the average elevation of the property of the site is at twelve and a half, which is outside the floodplain. So we don't have to worry about that potential issue. It will require permitting from the town from planning and zoning, and it will require a camera view from the state. So now getting into the specifics of what a pump track is, it's really an earthen track with mounds that are built in sequence that allows a rider of almost any kind of bicycle. So the price of entry is very low. So, so kids in the Fort Hill neighborhood that have a bicycle of almost any kind can come over here and they can, they can push the bike up onto this staging area in the top right. It's about four feet high. And then it can roll off in, in, into any of these pathways. And the way these work is, is you, you roll in with a little of the speed. You unweight over the mound and you push down as you go down the mound and you generate momentum and speed without pedaling. So a, a person, once they learn this, which is, which is almost intrinsically a natural activity that you learn very quickly, a person that can, can ride throughout this circuit by simply pushing and pulling. And that's where the, that's where the, the word pump and track come from. And you could ride here for hours if you had the stamina, just going around and around. And it's really a terrific feeling, almost joyful experience. And you see children and adults alike really, really having a grand time doing this. If you were to, if you were to just as Mark said, Google pump tracks and perhaps look at some of the short videos on like a YouTube that show people using pump tracks, you would, you would, you would see what I am talking about. In communities where these have been installed, they're just a, they're just a hit. They're so popular. And in Connecticut, there's really only one other public pump track and it's down in Madison. And there's a, a new one coming this year in Bristol. Bike Bristol, a similar organization to ours, has, has put together a proposal and they're going to build their track in a public park. And this is becoming a facility that is common in parks and recreation systems and especially out in the western part of the country, they're becoming much more common. We're a little late learning about it. But what we do know is that it's beginner friendly, family friendly, suitable for riders of all ages and all skill levels. And that is, it's easy to maintain. Bike Grotten will assist the Parks and Rec Department in any kind of special maintenance that might be taken care of. But principally what is required is just mowing and string trimming, any overgrowth that happens to come up. Here are some photographs of what these look like. You can see the kind of the terrain, the rolling. The, the mounts are called rollers and the turns are called berms. And that's basically all there is to it. And then I'm going to finish here with project schedule. As Mark said, we met with the Parks and Recreation Commission. We had applied for a grant from the People's, People for Bikes Organization, a national bike advocacy organization. Doesn't look like we're going to be invited to the final round. You know, we had some loose ends in our application, this being one of them, not having a formal endorsement by our, by our municipality yet, but we're, we're not deterred. We're, we're going to initiate a fundraising campaign here, assuming or provided that we receive this, this approval. We'll begin our outreach in earnest. We'll, we'll, we'll have information in print and, and social media. We'll have a Zoom open house. We'll talk to folks in the neighborhood and in the other larger community about this. If all goes well, then we'll submit a site plan application to the, the town and to the state for the CAM. And, and I will take care of all of the site planning requirements, the documentation. We'll kick off our fundraising campaign. And if we're, if we're, if we're rapidly successful with fundraising, there is a chance that this summer and fall, we could be out for bid in construction. I think a more realistic schedule though is that we're looking at 2022. So thank you very much for your attention. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if Mr. Berry wanted to add anything or Mr. Bird.
Yeah, I, I just want to ask, mention that when, after Brian first came to me and proposed this idea, I reached out to John and I think his reply was, well, that sounds pretty cool. I think I'd even try that. So. So I, I think, you know, if we, if we move forward this in the ribbon cutting, I think it would be great if John would be the first one out on the course.
There you go. Mr. Bird, what say you, sir?
I just told my wife that I wanted to try it.
All right.
I'm all for it.
Very good. And I see Counselor Hand. So Counselors appear. You have the floor, sir.
Yeah, just a couple of questions quickly. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
One is how large, how, how large is that site?
The existing park is.
Let me go back to the right slide. Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Well, I was going to say, I think it was in one of the slides. I, I don't recall off the top of my head, the, the number of acres of that site.
All right, and.
I, I've, I've measured it. It's a, I believe it's, I believe it's four or five acres. Pump track itself takes up about a quarter of an acre.
Well, one of the other things that we've been considering is ball fields. And would a rectangular field fit in that area? Would a baseball field fit in that same area? I presume this is all town owned land now. Is that correct?
It, it is. Yes, this is a town park.
Okay, so I, I'm just asking, would a baseball field fit in that area?
Potentially, you know, I think you'd have to look at the, the parking. You probably would have to extend, extend parking in order to accommodate you know, all the folks that were participating in, in a, in a baseball game. I think it would be a small field. But I, I guess potentially that, that could be a site.
And I, and my understanding of the proposal is that this is not going to cost the town anything other than the commitment of the land use. Is that right?
That's correct. Bike Grotten has committed to doing the fundraising for this project.
And they will maintain it as well?
I think it would be a cooperative relationship with maintaining. You know, I think through the design bid and construction process, if that's done properly, the maintenance should be minimal. And, you know, Brian talked about community outreach, and I think that's an important part of, of this whole project. And, you know, if they're, if they get the support of the bicycle community, which I think they will. My experience is working with other particularly trail bike groups is that they're more than willing to lend a hand to assist with maintenance. So I, I would see this as a minimal maintenance for the, for the Parks and Recreation Department. I think if we use ground cover i- in areas where we normally might have to use a weed whacker, you know, that will cut down, certainly cut down on, on maintenance of this new facility.
All right. I, I'd just like to say I'm all in favor of diversity, all kinds of sports. But we, we do have a plan to put in, I think about ten new ball fields and rectangular fields. And we don't have designated space for them yet. This is a different use of this land and would preclude its use for one of those ball fields. Nonetheless, I like it. So.
And I.
You might find.
Can I interject? Pardon me, but it's this.
Yep.
In this, in this slide, you can see the ball fields of Sutton Park over to the right.
Yep.
And even the smaller field compared to this site, that smaller field is about the size, if not larger than this entire site.
Okay.
So a, a, a regulation ball field of, I think, almost any type is just too large for this, this park.
Right. Well, as I said, you might find me over there too with, with John Bird.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Um, let's see, get this back to where it needs to be. So we have Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. I think this looks pretty exciting. I guess the best way that I see it is, it's almost like a skate park only with, for bikes. I have been to one that I can think of actually, I think it was in West Greenwich, Rhode Island. And they seem to be very successful out there. They kind of call it a BMX park, pump bike track, I believe. And it's used heavily from my understanding. I was out that way for visiting friends that had children using it. So I think it's a great asset. I think looking at the skate park, a lot of youth and adults use it. And I think this is another way to have more outdoor activities, especially during COVID, as we're realizing we need more things to do outside. So I think it could be a great asset. I am interested to see what the upkeep, upkeep and cost would be so that we're prepared for that. And what material, if you look at all the different pump tracks around from California to some of the greater, you know, greatest, greatest ones too. They're all made differently and all different with different intentions and different materials. And some are fenced in, others have lights. So there's a, there's a lot of lengths of extents that you can go with this. So is any of that thought of or, or is just the base, the drawing that we have? How, what's some of the amenities or how, how are we envisioning this as far as materials and the, the other assets that might be there? Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to answer that. The, the base cost for this, if we compare to the most recent pump track built in the region, which was in Madison at the, at the Rockland Bike Park, was around $35,000. And theirs does include a chain link fence that surrounds it, but there are really no other amenities there. They already had some at the, at the, at their bike park. And that's primarily a mountain bike area on town property. But as you know, there are enhancements that could be included here if we can raise sufficient funds. Now, we are proposing to raise forty to forty-five thousand dollars to build the basic facility. And perhaps if we need to put a fence around it, just to, just to, to protect the, the track from, you know, any kind of unwanted access other than from the main entry point. But it will, like I said, be principally just earth. And because the site is flat and open, the, the site construction is very simple. It's just a matter of, of skillfully adding the, the earth in, in this particular circuit. Now, what differentiates this kind of facility from the one you mentioned in East Greenwich? Is, that is a, that is a BMX track. And there's a difference. A BMX track is actually a racetrack that starts at a very high point and ends at an outlet. It's just a one-way track, whereas this facility is, is endless. You just go around and around and there's no racing involved. There's really no organized activity like the BMX clubs and the, and the, and that they have a nonprofit that operates it. And you know, there are teams and that sort of thing. This is completely informal. Any citizen, any time can come in here and ride it. You can see, you can see Cadillacs of pump tracks. There's one at Brooklyn Bridge Park in New York City. That's enormous. It's paved. There's a community garden adjacent to it. It's just really quite a facility. And that's, of course, there are others out west. We're just talking about something very simple and basic. We can, we can landscape it with wood chips. I mean, we don't even really have to have grass or landscaping. And initially, that may be what we do. That would suppress the, you know, the weeds and minimize the maintenance. We would control the, the runoff and the drainage. This plan that you're seeing here has rain gardens shown in between the tracks absorb as much water as possible before you know, discharge. We'll get creative. We have a, we have a, an advisor who has a lifetime of experience riding pump tracks and has been involved in the design of some of them. And he's, he's volunteered to help us out. So, and we feel very confident that we can execute this so that it meets all of the, you know, the criteria that the town would desire for operations and maintenance. And then as time goes by, we might be able to fund other enhancements, like you say, some lighting out there so that it can extend, extend the hours. Maybe pavilion or benches. We'll just see. It's the sort of thing that can easily be enhanced, depending on its use and the, the demand for it.
My, my last question, I'm not sure who would answer. Is this something that would open, I mean, open in the morning and close at dusk? And, and anybody can just go in? Or how would it, how would it function?
Yeah, I would see.
In our experiences, it's just been open and, and that even, even get, they could even get some nighttime use, but really it's up to, it's up to the, the Parks and Rec Department. Mark can answer that, I think, better than I can.
Yeah, I would see this being used available a- at any time. I, I don't see us locking the gate, you know, so that people can't get in. Like Brian said, I think it's, you know, just trying to keep some perhaps unwanted activity from the track, but I would see it being open at any time.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm, I'm excited to see it come to be. I think it would be great, again, extra activities outdoors. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Hi, thank you. So Mr. Berry, this sort of reminds me of when the skate park went in. And I know people had a lot of concerns about liability onto the town. And I believe that also was a partnership with a group and they helped raise money. And it seems as though our skate park is very popular. And I actually just drove by. I drove in Sutton Park today and there was a lot of people in there. So how did that all work out? And have you had any issues? And do you, would you sort of see this similar, this project being similar to that?
Yes, I, I see this project is quite similar to that. Yes, I, I see this project is quite similar to that. I, I'm not aware of, you know, there's a variety of, of people use the skate park at different levels. You know, you've got your beginners and you're more advanced. And I would have to check with human risk management. And I did have a discussion with Bob about this. And he was actually surprised at how few issues there's been at the skate park. And I would, I would actually probably expect less. I think, you know, trying to ride up some of those ramps on four small wheels is, is much more of a challenge than riding through a pump track on a bike. So yeah, I would see this, this partnership as similar to the skate park.
So at the skate park, we insure it? Is that how it works? I mean, because I'm not exactly sure how the partnership is with the people that raised the money. Did they raise the money and then the town took it over after it was raised?
Well, I'm actually, you know, the skate park went in before I was the director. But yes, the, the skate park is covered under the town's insurance, just as this facility would be also.
And this is John Burke. It really, the insurance doesn't go up by use. So even if you add something, it doesn't affect the insurance.
Okay. Then I just know that that was the big concern when the skate park went in. And I remember a lot of people had concerns about that. But skate parks are very popular. So another question, just because it's near the water, is, are there flooding issues at all here?
No, I think that was one of the things that I think Brian mentioned is that the, the average site elevation is 12.5, which keeps it out of the flood plain. And in the eight years that I've been here, I have never seen that, that park be flooded. Now, you know, that doesn't mean it couldn't ever occur. You know, certainly as our climate changes.
But not a regular or routine thing?
No, no. And if it was, then you know, Brian, as a landscape architect, would have probably not recommended this particular site, knowing the complications that, or the challenges that we would face in our proposal and trying to locate it here.
Thank you. And one last thing I would just like to say is I have been to this park. I've walked the boardwalk and gone to this park. And I've already scoped out the area to see if it was large enough for possibly a baseball field. And I also do not think it's large enough for a baseball field, though.
It would be tight.
I have.
If we could do it at all.
Right. So I think this is exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Obray.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Kent for coming to the town with something that really looked so exciting. But coming prepared to take care of most of the costs. Lots of people come with wonderful ideas, but they usually want the town to carry the burden. So I think this is great. You know, I really see it as another avenue for the kids to be outside, as Borger had mentioned. And I fully support your efforts. And I want to thank you very much for what you're doing. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to align my remarks with Counselor Obray. So excited to see this proposed pump track here in Groton. Over the last few months, we've heard great news that the town of Groton received a Community Connectivity Grant from the state of Connecticut, one of 10. There's something to be said about that time and time again. Over the last two years, this council has asked town staff to seek various state grants. And more times than not, we've been successful. And I think that's a testament to not just the, the staff, the hard work of our staff, but also the vision of this council. So I do have a question with respect to just the, the pump track. Is there any pump track in a surrounding municipality? Or where is the nearest pump track to, to Groton currently?
So that, if I can answer, the, the nearest pump track is in the town of Madison, which is, you know, down the coast, about an hour's drive, maybe a little less. And it's on the northern end of Madison. Madison's a very narrow north-south shaped town. And it's up at the very top at, at Rockland, which is, which is actually one of the best known mountain bike areas in New England. Because of the trails that have been built there by volunteers and attracts people from, from all over, even farther than the state boundary. And they have had such an enthusiastic response to their, their mountain biking facility that they, they raised the money to, to, to build their pump track. Now, Bluff Point is a similar mountain bike area with a similar reputation. And we feel like the pump track will just add another feather in the cap of Groton as a destination for mountain biking and also of course for residents. So right at the entrance to the Rockland Bike Park, I think that's Route 79, is, is, is their pump track. Like I said, there will be one in Bristol, probably Merb, because they received a very generous grant from the National Park and Recreation Association. And other than that, you know, there just aren't any other public pump tracks that we know of. Now, people are building pump tracks in their backyards. In fact, there's, there's one in, in Groton somewhere. But of course, those aren't available to us. So to have a public pump track in Groton will definitely put us on the map. And also not to, to overlook, I've received a lot of interest from local bike shops because there are actually pump track specific types of bikes that the shops are very interested in, in selling to folks because they can go and ride them, you know, down at the, at the Boardwalk Park. So you'll see that it has both benefits, large and small.
Now, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned mountain biking at, at Bluff Point. When I was a kid, I took mountain bike courses or classes with the Parks and Recreation Department here in the town. And my question to, to Mark would be, could we potentially offer courses to, or classes to kids? Should we, should, you know, we move forward in, in building a pump track?
Oh, absolutely. I, I would see this as a, as us being able to offer an introductory class both to kids and to the adults. I wouldn't want the town manager to get on the pump track without a little bit of training.
And, and my last question, and I think Mayor Granitowski will, will enjoy this. We, or we will be welcoming a new bike shop here in Groton, an e-bike shop very close by. So we're definitely creating a bit of a bicycle hub already with this, you know, the, with the Community Connectivity Grant and obviously the new bike shop and potentially the Eastern Shore Line Path. But could you utilize an e-bike on, on a pump track or is that, I would imagine it would be discouraged?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that an e-bike is built for the type of use. And I'm not sure that the owner would, would be all that receptive to the idea of his $1,200 e-bike, you know, circling around and going over these, the hummocks. And so, yeah, that would probably be discouraged because those things can go pretty quickly. And I think we'd be asking for an accident if we allowed that type of use on, or that type of a, a bike on, on a pump track.
Well, again, thank you, Mark, for your leadership on this. You have my complete support. And obviously, thank you, Brian, for, you know, your continued support for biking here in Groton. And I eagerly await the town manager's first trip on, on the, the track. And I'll be sure to bring my, I pick, you know, my, my chair and some popcorn.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Heed, was that an errant mouse? Or did you have your hand up, sir?
Oh, no, no. I added up. I just wanted to throw my two cents in to support the track. And I remember I had to build one of these when I was a kid. And this one looks much more impressive than what I accomplished. So I say, you know, move forward. Let's go with this. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to just lend support. I think it's another nice opportunity for our young people and young adults who might be moving into our community. The outdoor recreation, this is, this part of town is becoming a hub for that. And it's, it's wonderful to see. And, you know, hopefully it will draw people in and they'll be stopping at our, our restaurants and our little shops along the way. Let's see. Any other first time speakers? Councilor Bordelon, you have the floor for a second time on this object.
Thank you. I just was going to quickly just state that I just think it's perfect, the location in reference to Bluff Point. I mean, it really, you know, that's, people know that it's on the map. And even if they're not coming to the town, they go there with their bike and they do the trails. And so I think this location of this bike park will be perfect. Some of the advanced trail riders, you know, that's a great warm-up section before they, you know, hit the course, you know. So I think it's strategic and I think it will bring in a lot of folks because of the location of the interests of mountain bikers that already go to Bluff Point that go right through there. So that if they didn't know about it, they're going to see it. So I hope we get some cool signage, you know, out towards there too, to let people know where to go. Thanks.
All right. So as I said, when we started this item, the manager is looking for consensus from the council. And I have not heard any objection. So is there, is there consensus to authorize Mr. Burke to write a letter of support for this project?
Yes.
Any, any objection? All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kent, for coming out this evening and for your presentation. Mr. Burke, you have, you have the consensus of the council to support this project. I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute quick recess. We do have quite a bit more to get to tonight. So it is 8:55. So we will take a recess and we'll come back at nine o'clock, please. Thank you. Back from recess. And we are on to item 2021 101, Approval of Regular Part-Time Program Director Position. And this is on page 44. Let me just make sure we have all the counselors on three. We're waiting on Counselor Obray. So we're at eight right now. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight counselors as of nine. Counselor Parker, I believe this is your item. And this is, hello, Counselor Heed. And this is on page 44.
Resolution authorizing the creation of a position of a regular part-time program director position within the Parks and Recreation Department, whereas a regular part-time program director is a needed position in the department to provide better coordination of the work being done, better program delivery and oversight. And whereas funding for this position is included in the department's 3240 special revenue budget, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves of the creation of the regular part-time program director position for the Parks and Recreation Department. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. And we had discussion on this item in committee of the whole. And there's Counselor Obray. We'll give Counselor Obray a second. Counselor Obray, we are just about to vote on 2021 101, Approval of Regular Part-Time Program Director Position. It's been moved and seconded. Counselor Bordelon, do you have discussion on this item?
Yeah, just a quick question. When are they going to actively make a decision and hire for that position? When do they plan to have that closed out by, once the consolidation happens?
Think as quickly as I can.
Okay. So it's, all right. So it's going to happen right away. Great. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on 2021 101, Approval of Regular Part-Time Program Director Position. We are at nine counselors. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One, Parker.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker. Thank you. We are on to 2021 1031, Pleasant Valley School Property Sale. Schedule public hearing. This is page. This is page 45 and I believe we are on to Counselor Franco.
Yes. I make a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the sale of the Pleasant Valley School property. Whereas the town of Groton owns excess buildings and properties that are no longer needed for public use. And whereas the town has been marketing the former Pleasant Valley School. And whereas the Connecticut General Statute section 7-163E requires a public hearing through the legislative body on the sale of real, real property owned by municipality that has a value exceeding $10,000. And whereas the town of Groton has issued an RFP for the property and is in the process of interviewing interested developers. And whereas the town of Groton will in the future prepare a purchase and sales agreement for the purchase of the property by a preferred developer, once they have been vetted by the town council. Now therefore be resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to schedule a public hearing for April 6, 2021, for purposes of selling the Pleasant Valley School property consistent with CGS 7-163E. ISO move.
Second Heed.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021 103 Pleasant Valley School Property Sales Schedule Public Hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2020 8071 Building Fee Refund Policy. And this is on page 46 and Counselor Heed, please.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the building permit fee refund policy. Whereas the Town of Groton Code of Ordinance, Section 5-1D states after January 1st, 1999, fees may be amended by resolution of the town council and will be kept on file in the office of the town clerk. And whereas building permit fees are set by resolution of the town council, but currently there is no standard for refunds of fees if works, if work is not started on a project. And whereas OPTS staff wishes to establish policy for building permit fee refunds. And whereas the building refund policy proposed will issue refunds to applicants based upon the following. One, a processing fee of $20 or 50 cents, .50 per thousand dollar based upon the estimated cost will be applied to all permit refunds, whichever is greater. Two, in addition to letter A above, a $2 per thousand dollar fee cost will apply if a planned review was completed. Three, if the permit has resulted in at least one onsite inspection, no refund shall be issued. Four, if the permit is expired, as defined by the State Building Code, no refund shall be issued. Now therefore be it resolved, the town council approves the refund policy as requested. ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Heed and seconded by O'Bree. All right. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2020 807 Building Fee Refund Policy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 10E 2021 661, FYE 2020 Caffer, page 47. And this should be Counselor O'Bree, please.
Resolution accepting the FYE 2020 Audit Report. Whereas the town council has considered the annual audit of the town of Groton finances covering the fiscal year from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. And whereas the council has discussed the audit finding with the manager of the audit team from the firm Clifton Lassen Allen LLP, formerly Blum Shapiro. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton accepts the file, accepts and files the FYE 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, the auditor's report and management letter. So moved.
Second Heed.
Moved by O'Bree and seconded by Heed. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021 66 FYE 2020 Caffer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 10F 2020 8931 Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Request. This was on page 48 in your packet and I believe we are on to Counselor Bordelone.
A resolution authorizing the submission of reimbursement request to OPM Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund. Whereas the Federal Coronavirus Act Relief and Economic Security Act CARES Act includes funds from Connecticut governments to pay costs incurred in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the Office of Policy and Management, OPM, established the Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF, program to reimburse municipalities for such costs as where, and whereas the request for reimbursement must be authorized by the municipality's legislative slash governing body. Now there be it resolved that the town manager, John Burt, or his designee is authorized to submit for reimbursement from the CRF program for COVID-19 expenses for the period March 1st, 2020 through December 30th, 2020. ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Bordelone and seconded by Heed. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2020 893 Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Request. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We're on to 2021 122 Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management Sign On. This was on page 49 and I believe we are on Counselor Melendez, please.
Resolution adopting the sign-on to the Connecticut Coalition of Sustainable Materials Management. Whereas the Groton Town Council agrees with the sign-on statement of the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management. And whereas the town council wishes to join the CCSMM group, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes Mayor Patrice Granatowski to act on behalf of the town council and sign on to the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management and appoints down town staff members as needed to serve on this group. So move.
Second.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by O'Bree. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021 122 Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management Sign On. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. Here to 10H 2021 1251 Middle School Athletic Field Lights. This was on page 50 in your packet and this is Counselors of Perry, please.
Resolution for inclusion of athletic field lights at Groton Middle School in the scope of the Groton 2020 Project. Whereas a referendum was held and approved on November 8, 2016, authorizing the appropriation and issuance of bonds and notes for the design and construction of the Groton 2020 Plan consisting of a new consolidated middle school and conversion of the existing middle schools into renovated like new elementary schools, schools comprising the Groton 2020 Plan. And whereas a second referendum was held and approved on December 11th, 2018 to allow construction of two new elementary schools, replacing the conversion of the middle schools. And whereas the new Groton Middle School has been successfully built with ownership transferred to the Board of Education. And whereas Groton Public Schools has requested the use of unexpended bond funds from the construction of the middle school in the amount of $825,000 for the installation of outdoor lighting at the synthetic multi-sport field and softball field. And whereas a change of scope of the product, project by the Groton Town Council is needed for inclusion of the outdoor lighting in the Groton 2020 Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council determines the scope to the scope of the Groton 2020 Plan Project Approval Approved by Voters in the November 8, 2016 and the December 11, 2018 elections to include the Groton Middle School Athletic Fields Outdoor Lighting to allowable uses of the funding in the amount of $825,000. And be it further resolved that Groton Public Schools will not charge, charge a fee for use of those fields aside from incurred in utility cost. ISO move.
Second Franco.
Moved by Perry and seconded by Franco. I just have to say, listening to the resolution being read and everything we went through to get these schools built, I just have to say, good job, everybody in Groton. All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2021 125 Middle School Athletic Field Lights, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. All right. And we are back for 2020 8062 Addressing Climate Change, Resiliency and Sustainability, page 51. And we're starting over again with Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Resolution of commitment to address climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central management principle for all actions of the town government. Whereas this past year, the occurrence of multiple powerful hurricanes, major forest fires, extreme heat waves in extreme cold and non-traditional locations have heightened our awareness of climate change and the necessity of taking bold steps to combat it. And whereas in Groton, we have experienced a steady rise in sea level, increasing powerful precipitation events and extreme temperatures. And whereas the town, town recognizes that the changing climate has the potential to negatively affect our population, environment and economy. And whereas climate change poses a growing threat to the health and safety of Groton residents. And whereas human activity contributes to these threats and humans must take action now to reduce the impacts and severity of these threats. And whereas by taking action now, we will lessen the costs and severity of anticipated climate change impacts on future generations. And whereas the Groton Town Council is committed to becoming a leader in combating climate change and becoming a more sustainable community, balancing economic development with protecting our natural resources. Now therefore be it resolved that together as elected community of leaders, we commit to actively promoting and employing resiliency and sustainability principles as we seek solutions that effectively address climate risks, including protecting land, air and water quality, lowering our carbon footprint, combating the devastating impacts of climate change, reducing injury and illness and maintaining and improving our quality of life. And further be it resolved that the Groton Town Council directs the town manager to continue seeking reductions in energy consumption in town operations as a step forward, a step towards a low carbon future. And be it further resolved that the council supports creating a resilience and sustainability manager, manager position to assist the town manager and staff in pursuing opportunities to incorporate resilience and resiliency principles in all town matters. And further be it resolved, the Groton Town Council will consider these guiding principles to be central to all aspects of town governance and operations. So moved.
And I will second that. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Granatowski. I just wanted to thank Mr. Burt for writing or drafting and writing this resolution for us. And I'm sure he would not have written anything that would be a concern. Counselor Parker.
I do have a concern.
Yes, please.
Uh, in our budget books on page 120, there's a position that says sustainability. Can we, I move that we strike out the word sustainability because we already have a position that is, says we have one person doing that job.
So, so are you looking to strike the second to last resolved?
Yes.
Is there, is there a, so Counselor Parker has a motion to strike the second to last resolved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let me get the counselor or not counselor, Madam Clerk, are you getting that second?
I, I am.
Thank you. That was moved by Parker, seconded by O'Bree. And Counselor Parker gave her rationale. Did you wish to speak further to that, Counselor Parker?
At last I stated is on page 120 of our budget book under the FYE 21 adopted budget. If anyone has any questions about it, and it's the third person down, it says we have a sustainability project management person.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, well, I will send this to you first to see if you wanted to speak to the concern.
Sure. I mean, it's of course, I don't have a real vested interest in, in this. It was a big, it was a big motion from not vague, vague, but there wasn't a lot of direction in the motion. So I came up with this. They are two different position titles, though they're not the same position title. And this position is put in for a request for the new budget, but completely at the will of the council.
So for clarification purposes, missed the, I don't want to use the gentleman's name. The gentleman that Counselor Parker is referencing, that stays in the budget this year and this would be an additional position.
Yes, correct. And that position, as you probably recall, is mostly pulled off on the school. There, it is being helped for solar. But again, this is going to be a different job description. There's going to be more duties added on. It's a, you know, it's a little bit different, different title. So.
Okay. Madam Clerk, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand if it was the same person or not. So it's, it's a new job, it's just, it's a new person altogether. Okay.
May I speak again? Or go ahead, go through first.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. Um, there was much discussion about this at our account meeting and I had raised many concerns because the word action was actually part of the, um, the motion that had carried. And the word action, to take action in all of what we do, and instead it was replaced with guiding principles. Um, I can be on board with that. I have a clarifying question for Counselor Parker. Are you looking to remove the word sustainability off of the second to last resolved or the whole section?
As long as the person's not doing part of the position of the sustainability person that is located under public works, that does not cross over, the job description does not cross over under either of them, I will not have a problem with it, taking out the word sustainability. But if it crosses over, I have a problem. So there needs to be clarification under what jobs this person will be doing compared to what the other person's doing. Because we are paying for a position under our budget book, that there's a position that has money budgeted for that person.
Counselor Franco, is that, oh, I'm sorry.
So I just make it clear that it's two separate jobs and sustainability cannot be used in both positions if they're doing the same typical job. Even if the other person's not doing that job, we are paying for a position.
Counselor Franco, did that answer your question? You still have time left.
Well, Mr. Burt looked like he wanted to jump in and say something.
I was just going to say, you know, the position that's existing is funded entirely out of the school budget, out of the school construction budget. And that position is expected to go away once the school project is done. The, the job scripts will have overlap, though. That person is doing some solar stuff now, but it's at least 90% of the job is on the school construction. So there's, it's not adequate to meet our needs.
Understood. Thank you. I think I, um, I think I can be, I'm in favor of this. Um, I think they were looking, I think the committee that brought it to us was looking for more and there should be, I think, brought back to the council at times and have further discussion regarding the revolving account that they had requested. And I believe. And I believe when it comes to the this position that we're looking for and here to fund in this future budget, that person would be also in charge of getting grants. Is that correct? Because otherwise, that would be a whole nother issue to bring back as well to the council. Because to do a lot of these things, I think it would be helpful to have the grants and funding those things to accomplish many of these tasks that we're putting before us right now.
Yes, that's part of their duties. It's the secret. And then, oh, just to point out, after I did my draft of this, I did submit it to Zell for review, who presented last time, and he just made a couple tweaks. He felt it was in line with what they were looking for. So, for what it's worth.
I do appreciate the changes that were made and the clarification that it was, just the wording happened changed. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Madam Clerk, we will vote on striking the resolved first. Is that correct?
You're doing, yes, you're, you're, the amendment is what you're voting on first.
Very good. All right, so I will call for a vote on the amendment that would strike the second to last resolve, which says, resolve that the council supports creating resilience and sustainability manager position to assist the town manager and staff in pursuing opportunities to incorporate resilience and system resilience and resiliency principles in all town matters, and further be it. So that would be stricken if you vote in favor of this amendment. Sorry. Hold on. Yes. What, I'm sorry, what were you saying? I had to turn the timer on.
And a clarification, I thought Counselor Parker just wanted to remove the word sustainability in that because that is
Right, so I ask, do you wish to strike the second to last resolved? And I thought you said yes, Counselor Parker.
I did, because we already have the position, but I see where it's going, but I'm not going to say anything else.
Okay, so the motion was to strike that second to last resolve. All right, so right now you're voting on striking that second to last resolve. So all those in favor, please say aye, or actually raise your hand, please, so I can get the, or I'm so used to taking their votes. Go ahead, please raise your hands.
I'm raising my hand.
So Counselor Parker, Counselor Heed, Counselor Aubrey. All those opposed, please raise your hands. Counselor Melendez. Counselors of Perry. Counselor Baumgartner. Counselor Bordelon. Counselor Franco. Counselor Granatowski. And zero abstentions, correct? All right, so the the amendment fails. So we are back to the main motion. And seeing no discussion, we'll vote on the main motion, 2028 06, Addressing Climate Change, Resiliency and Sustainability. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No. Parker.
Any abstentions? So that motion passes, eight in favor, one opposed, Parker's zero abstentions. Thank you. We are on to other business, and this is the open agenda item review for March. And Mr. Burt sent out, I don't know if I printed the updated one. Mr. Burt, I'll turn it over to you. Counselor Franco, do you have something on the open agenda items? Or did you have, let's, let's go to Mr. Burt first. Mr. Burt, go ahead and present on the open agenda items, please. Page 52, please, in your packet if you need to look.
Well, and that's just as much presented, sort of, is there any questions?
I'm sorry? I didn't, I didn't hear.
You're talking to me?
I didn't, I heard someone speak. I was going to say something, though. Give me, can, give me one second, please. This was originally, I thought you had added things, Mr. Burt. Can you refresh my memory? Was it?
There were two, there were two items added at the, at the end. The Performing Arts Commission and the Fund Balance Minimum Review, Minimum Amount Review. Somehow those didn't make it into the minutes, and I, there was no email, much email traffic afterwards. But I rewatched the meeting because I thought there was enough support, and I was correct, there was enough support. It just didn't get reflected in the minute, so I've added those in.
Okay, so I see those here on the bottom. All right, so we have, we have two counselors who wish to speak to items on the open agenda item review, please. That's what this is, that's what this time is for now. Counselor Franco.
So I would like to bring back to the open agenda items our blight ordinance for review by the council. I think there've been, there have been some things over the past probably three years that need to be reviewed. And I know that we have worked on this once, and I'd like to bring it back with possibly some new items to be added to that ordinance. And so I'm requesting that to be added back on.
So I think, not sure how we have to do that. I think we might need to make it a new referral. Are you looking to amend the blight ordinance?
I'm looking to review it and see if we come to a consensus to amend it.
Okay, so why don't we keep it clean and just say, Counselor Franco would like a referral on this. I can support that. Is there another counselor who could support review of the blight ordinance? Okay, so Mr. Burt, can you make a note of that, please? That that's an item that we're going to add to the referral list is review, review and discussion of the blight ordinance?
Yep.
Does that suit your purposes, Counselor Franco?
Yes, thank you.
I had Counselor Aubrey next.
Yes, I was, a question first on 2020 dash 77 and 2020 dash 608, are they both the same thing?
No, you had requested a review of the remainder of the, what is, remember, we had that plan for signage that we pushed off? One is that, and the other is your request.
Oh, okay. I, I believe there was a resolution that was being rewritten to come back to continue conversation on our access.
Now before Rachel, that can't be brought up for another year, but we would move on to.
I had put in one, not correctly that night, but I had put in asking to continue with discussion from the bridge.
Yes. There's just no resolution.
It's, the referral, the, I'm going to jump in here, I'm sorry, Mr. Burt. The referral is in place, and we're looking at scheduling that for the 23rd of this, of this month.
Depending availability of Deb Jones, because she's critical to it, and she does have planning commission that night. So we'll have to talk a little bit more about that.
But it is, I am looking, we, Mr. Burt and I have discussed getting that on for the the second cow of the month if staff is available.
And may I ask a question about something that's not on here? I was going to try to to get the parks and rec director, but I didn't jump in fast enough. I'm just wondering if we could review with him youth basketball.
Youth basketball?
Yeah.
Just like over?
I've been asked if we have anything for youth basketball in Groton, and I said, I really wasn't sure. I know we used to have it in the city. I don't believe we have it in the city anymore. And I don't think we have it in the town. Now we have a gym at our community center, so I'm hoping maybe we can resurrect that because basketball is, is growing again.
Now, do you want that straight on as a agenda item? Do you want me to first get some information from Mr. Berry to pass on to the council as to anything that's going on with it?
If we can get the information first, that would be great.
Okay, I'll get it to you in the next, probably tomorrow.
Take your time. That's fine.
Thank you. We've got, I've got other counselors that have had their hands up, so.
Ball set. Thank you very much.
I met people waving at me. So I have Counselors of Perry next, and then Baumgartner.
I'm interested in seeing extension of sewer and municipal water supply and bridge repairs put on for some date. I, I just, I don't know if I stand alone in that interest, but I think those are two fundamental issues in our infrastructure that we should be looking at.
It is, it is on our list. We have, as you can see, we have many, many items on here, and we're, we're doing our best. I'm doing my best to try to juggle everything and get these in in a timely manner. We had your other agenda items, the tax abatements potentially on for the ninth. That is, if you are satisfied with the information you've been given, we could bring that back on the ninth. So that was, that was something that was pending for the first cow of the month.
Okay.
Are you, are you prepared to move on, to resurrect that again, Counselors of Perry? Do you have everything you need?
Yes.
Okay. And then so noted on, so noted on your other referral. Counselor Baumgartner was next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Burt, three questions, very brief. One, with respect to the Shinnecostet Rules and Regulations and Rates item. Is that, will that be a day where we discuss multiple issues or happenings with the golf course?
We could. It's right now, it's just, just a recommendation on the new rates like we do every year.
I, I just want to cite Gary Wells reached out to the council a few weeks back with respect to getting the Shinnecostet Golf Course on the National Register of Historic Places. And that's something I I support, and you know, maybe it's something that we could discuss. Doesn't, doesn't mean we have to, you know, make a decision on it, especially considering we would have to, you know, expend funds to submit an application. But I think it's worth exploring and definitely worth, worth the discussion if we, you know, have that, have the Shinnecostet Golf, an agenda item for our next council, committee of the whole meeting. The other item, is there a status report on Groton Heights? I've heard that there, it is starting to move again, but.
Yeah, it's starting to move. I, I talked to this, and Mr. Reiner's on here, but I talked to him, and I think we're hoping to come back to the council for the next step in approximately 90 days-ish. Is that, Mr. Reiner, is that? Why don't you go ahead and give a quick update on it? I think he's still on here. His name's on there.
Yes, I'm still on here. Sorry, I had to unmute there for a second. So, I'm sorry. Looking for a quick update on.
What? Yeah, forgotten.
Keeping in mind, this is not an agenda item either.
Just, just when you anticipate something coming back to the council.
I actually hope to have a referral to you on the second cow in March.
Thank you.
Excellent. And the last item is complete streets policy. Has the Planning and Zoning Commission opined on the, our request yet?
I have not received anything yet.
No, I, I think we're still working on that.
All right, and that is something that our council directly sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a comment. So I know the Planning and Zoning Commission has been busy lately issuing comments as well. So we would certainly welcome that. I know, just speaking for myself.
Mr. Reiner, could you check with Deb Jones just to see if she knows when it might be going on the agenda for further discussion?
Yes, I can do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
I just wanted to chime in on the Shinnecostet Rules, Regulations, and Rates. That is on for the ninth because it's a matter of timing that they get these regulations approved by us and then get them to the RTM. That's why it's kind of bumped up ahead here. So we want to make sure we get them in. They specifically requested that we do that at this, that kind of like, it seems like an early and rather quick thing, but it is because they have to jump through the other hoops for the RTM. But I'm sure that Mr. Berry and Mr. Morrison would be happy to answer your questions, Counselor Baumgartner. Any other first-time speakers before I go back to Counselor Franco? Counselor Bordelon?
Thanks. I was just asking, I just want a clarification of what Counselor Aubrey was asking about basketball, youth basketball for our town. Is that what she was asking, if we have a program?
Yes, she wanted to know if we had one, and if not, could we resurrect it, if I'm correct?
Yeah, because, because I know that there was one at least three or four years ago, and there used to be the Groton Youth Basketball run by the Groton Parks and Rec. And, and I don't know that it stopped except for maybe delayed with COVID, but I believe it's still going on.
But I'll get some information and pass it to you guys.
Yeah, I think that one is still going. I just had a question about, I was going to ask about the historic, as far as the I think my answers are, someone else brought up the other thing. I'm good. Thank you.
Just for clarification for my own sake, do we want to, not necessarily on the ninth, but do we want to add the national register item onto the list? I mean, that's a pretty simple one.
Well, let's, because we also have short-term rentals that evening.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't necessarily, I just meant at some point on the list generally.
I think it's a great idea.
Especially if we're going to have Shinnecostet Golf staff there, you know, we could kill two birds with one stone. Make it easier for them. As opposed to inviting them back, and I'm so sorry for speaking out of turn, Madam.
Let's, let's, we can, we can at least ask the question if, if staff is interested in pursuing that. And if they are, and if it requires more research, then we could bring it back for, for an additional one. But it is, as I said, the, the rules and regulations, really important that we get that taken care of for them at this meeting. So I'm just looking, I don't want to skip people. Counselor Franco?
If I was the golf National Registry, I thought we received an email and possibly Parks and Rec said they weren't ready to go forward with anything like that at the moment.
Can't recall off the top of my head. I, I will get some information tomorrow and get it to everybody, along with the basketball information.
Okay, and then one more thing, I didn't know, I don't see on the list here is on the Mystic Watcher's property and a decision regarding that.
Yeah, because I hadn't heard, well, I mean, it'll go back on, it's on the list yet, because I did the list, I think, before. I can't remember what the timing was, but it'll, I'll add it in.
It's looking, I, I have a note here that we were looking at that for the ninth, Mr. Burt.
Okay. I think it was coming so quick, we just threw it right out, rather than messing with the list.
All right, I was just making sure that, you know, it doesn't fall off. Thank you.
And Counselor Aubrey has her hand up. Clerk wanted to speak. Madam Clerk, did you wish to add something at this moment?
Yeah, I'm just very curious, this item on the agenda. It seems to me that this is committee of the whole business, because you're, you know, you're, I know these are items that are on agenda, but they're not on town council agenda, they're on committee of the whole agenda. Am I, am I wrong? I just, you know, this, this popped up, you know, a couple meetings ago on the agenda, and I thought, hmm, what's this doing here? But I, you know, it hadn't caught anybody's attention until just recently, last meeting and this meeting to discuss it. But these are all committee of the whole agendas items, you know, they're not, I don't know. Just wondering, it should be on committee of the whole, not on, on council, just curious.
I believe.
The current rules do.
Yes. Counselor Aubrey?
Might be wrong.
You're muted, Counselor Aubrey?
I just had a question. I don't want to muddy the waters, but with the Shinnecostet Golf Club, you know, Shinnecostet, we're looking to do the history because of who designed the course, if I, if I'm understanding correctly.
Right.
But also, I'm just wondering if maybe we might do a little history about the fact that the Indian, I apologize, I'm not sure what the correct name that I'm supposed to be using. But you know, in the floor down there, there was an Indian head. And it's a recognition of Shinnecostet. And it's a recognition of Shinnecostet. And I just wondered if maybe there might be some additional information and some acknowledgement of that.
And ask about that, too.
Right, we can certainly ask about that as well.
Thank you.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Again, Franco.
Moved by Aubrey and seconded by Franco. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, we are adjourned at 9:43 PM. Thank you, everybody, stay safe.
Night, everyone.
Be well.